All right, so welcome to Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with a routine and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is citizen input for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody at the meeting? Anybody on Zoom? So we have opportunity for somebody to possibly join us and use a raise hand feature. We're seeing none. So we do have one email, very specifically, Mr. SDCs from Bend, providing input saying fireworks has no place in Deschutes County. So it's a request to ban all recreational fireworks, referring to Pilot Butte Fireworks Show and other topics. So I want to thank you very much for this input. And, you know, this generally has been a discussion for maybe fire districts also, so because we've had information about requests for stopping yard burning too. So thank you very much for that input. So seeing no other citizen input at this time, we'll move to the consent agenda.
So move the consent.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Getting right to our action items, item number nine, presentation and update on Bend Heroes Foundation for Veterans Village. Thank you very much for joining us, Eric Tobias.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to update everyone on the status of the Veterans Village project.
And Kristi Bollinger is joining us also, our property.
Thank you.
I have Sam Davis and Carolyn Davis also here with me. They've worked hard on the project and may have some backup information for me if you have any questions.
Great, thank you.
So I was here in August talking about the project and, you know, making some proposals. And so I thought I would show a little bit of a evolution of the process. So this was our proposed layout out at the full show's location. After this, the Commissioners requested that we reorient the structures to the east side of the property. That yellow thing should say, as of August 7th, 2020. Sorry?
Do you have a printout with that?
It does say it.
Okay, good, good. So that's, last time I was here, that's what it looked like. We moved everything to the east and oriented in an elliptical fashion as requested by the Commissioners. And this is the new layout. And in fact, it's even farther east than this would show. This is the first architectural rendering, but the actual layout, which is Schedule C in the MOU, shows a more eastward orientation. So that's that. This is a little bit of a 3D rendering of how the village will look. You can see the parking lot, the storage area for county to the north end of the property, which would be the right side of this picture. And then the cabins to the south part of the project on the left side, the community building in the center. This is what it would look like to walk down the pathway to the cabins. And I have a short flyover. It's a bit of a roller coaster ride, so buckle up.
Thanks for the warning.
Neil Houston made this for us just to help us, you know, on the fundraising side to better, for folks to better visualize the project. So we have 15 of these cabins, single occupancy. They're 12 by 12. I'll show you the design. But you may remember, we had some potential cabins already in town that we were thinking about using. But in going through the building permit process, we just had an enormous amount of complexity to try to make use of these existing cabins that are, that were here in town. And so this is what we were showing last August, and this is what it is now. So we, everyone liked this, the aesthetic of this, and so we kept the aesthetic. Nice overhanging porch, front porch for, you know, community, you know, being outdoors, having a little bit of personal space in the outdoors. And then the structures are similar size. They're 12 by 12, 144 square feet. You can see the toilet, the sink, the bed in the upper left corner. And then we have a table for two and a bit of a closet. All of the units have ADA accessibility with a three-foot door. And so the whole, the whole unit could be ADA if needed, meaning the whole 15, all 15. There had been some early discussion about whether we would start with the restroom in the cabins plumbed up. And our request is that we do start with the restrooms enabled. The sewer line's going in right now. I'll show you a little bit about that in a second. But there's, we feel like there's no reason to not have the restrooms on day one. This is the community building design last August. It was going to be stick-built, but we found a modular building, which saved about $100,000, about two-thirds of the cost of a stick-built. And as you know, stick-built costs are going up all the time. So we locked in our costs back in December when the county provided the $150,000 of funding for the project from the state and federal COVID money. So this is the new layout. There was some constraints on the design because it has to be HUD certified. But basically, we make use of a manufactured home, pre-manufactured. And we use the bedrooms as our case management offices. So you can see, we've got case management in the upper left, lower right, and then a boardroom in the lower left with a kitchen and dining area central. We have laundry there on the left, showers in every restroom. There's an ADA restroom in the upper right. And so we were able to find good use for this pre-manufactured building and save some money and still meet all of our criteria. That's the change since we last met. This is what it looks like on the outside, not these exact colors, but close enough. It's, I really like the look of it. So the whole, we feel like the whole community will be very aesthetically appealing. So this is the real work that's going on. This is our driveway out there at Service Road, right by 911. And you can see the fence is completely installed, except for this front gate area that's temporary. And there's our access road. So the first thing we did is set about fixing the berm on the western edge. In our shared discussions with the neighbors, Chestnut Park neighborhood, you know, we had suggested that we could take on the project of improving that berm and replacing their fence. And they agreed with that idea. And so ultimately, this is what it looks like. You can't really tell the before side, but there was about a three-to-five-foot straight down drop on this western edge. And the fence would fall down that hill. It needed to be propped up. You couldn't really get any good footings in there. But now with the, you can see, we added a lot of fill and compacted it and made it nice and level there. So now this is what the grade looks like. So, you know, major improvement to the western edge of the property. You can still see the prior fence there. And then we were able to get the fence going pretty quick because we used the initial funding from Deschutes County to get that started, able to do it in the snow. So that's what it looks like in the after side of things. Here's going down the western edge. And then here's, the next thing we did after fixing that berm and installing the fences is to add our shelter pads. So these are going in the southeast corner. Then we add fill in between them. This is the eastern edge, and you can see the fence there. Lots of fill going in. We hoped to use some fill on the site. On the southern edge, there was a berm that you're looking at in this picture. But when we, when we excavated it, it wasn't really fill quality dirt. It was a bunch of big rocks. So those had to be removed from the property, and we had to import fill. But this is the process of what the, what the final berm looks like on that southern edge. It's really nice, compacted, level grade. Really improves the utility of that part of the property. So this is kind of the final look at it here. And that's where our walkway will be going in between the pads on the left and the pads on the right. Here's our water utility going in, very exciting. Copper line there. And then you can see the trench in the middle picture going off towards the project. There's our new access point for the valve there, right by the cul-de-sac. Sewer, you know, probably the funnest part so far. We really appreciate Deschutes County and especially Lee Randall and Kristi Bollinger for helping us connect into the existing pump station on site that saved us over $100,000. We would have had to install our own gravity, or sorry, our own pump, because the grade is below the existing sewer line, so we would have to pump out. So thank you, Lee and Kristi, for helping us use the existing pump station. So that's our connection to the existing pump station. Here's, we found a lot of rock trying to dig the sewer trench. But we did ultimately complete it about 24 hours ago. And you can see the sewer line going in. It's been inspected by the city. And on the right side of the picture is the completed sewer line. You can see the green pipe just in the middle of the picture. So it's completely filled under the road and done all the way out to the center part of the property where we'll tee off into all the individual cabins in the community building. So that's what's going on on site every day. We're making some great progress now that we've got the sewer behind us. We should start building the structures in the next 72 hours. In the meantime, we've been working with a couple of off-site construction partners, Jbar J and Heart of Oregon, you know, the youth in our, in our community to, to help build these shelters. And this is showing our prototype going up out at Jbar J. Whoops, didn't mean to do that. The mouse is moving. Okay, well, okay. Right, so Jbar J is helping us build the shelters. Heart of Oregon's helping us build the shelters. And we've got a crew coming on site here in the next 72 hours to get the shelters assembled at the site. This is what the prototype looks like. It's in a state of flux. This was a few days ago. And that's the kind of the construction update. In terms of fundraising, things have gone very well, starting with the $150,000 that Deschutes County committed. We really appreciate that. That really helped us get our footing in the whole fundraising process, because if you have the land committed and a source of funds, you know, the project is real. Until we had that, it was a lot of hand waving, you know, we're going to do this great Veterans Village project. But Deschutes County really enabled this to get off the ground, and it really accelerated the whole process. So we started with $150,000 from Deschutes County. We've raised about $350,000 from the community, a little bit over our expectations. Very pleased. The community's been very supportive. All of our design and engineering has been donated for free. And then we've raised about $300,000 in cash for shelter sponsorships and, and some of our other cash needs. The City of Bend recently awarded us $200,000 from the affordable housing fee, which is great. And so if you add those three sources, $150,000 from Deschutes, Bend's $200,000, and the 350 we've raised, we're at about $700,000 raised out of $800,000 budget. So we're seven eighths, 87% of the way there. And in August, we had requested $250,000 from the county. And so my request today is that we, you know, complete that request with additional $100,000. And that would fulfill the vision of really all of the stakeholders participating, you know, financially. Obviously, with the land from the county, that's a huge part of the project. You know, it's hard to really monetize, you know, what that value is, but it's certainly very valuable. You know, the project, the whole budget with, including SDCs, is about $1,050,000. And of course, SDCs got waived by the city and Parks and Rec, so we're grateful for that. But basically, you know, with $100,000 coming from Deschutes County, we'd have about a one-third allocation of cash funding to the project from all three constituents, the community, the City of Bend, and Deschutes County.
So that's a direct ask today for approval on that.
It is.
I mean, it was, we were provided this presentation before that, so we knew it was coming. But yeah, I mean, I didn't have a feel that we were at a spot for other capital needs until recently. So I mean, just acknowledging, this is the board, board's discussion on this ask. So you did a great job of making that ask just now. But yeah, I mean, this is another check that you're asking for from the county. It's exciting to see the project status as it is, you know, the progress made, the partnership. There's a lot of, yeah, donated efforts out there. I know that, you know, getting those big trucks to roll. Cost of dirt is, is way up there as well as a two-by-four, a two-by-six. So I know there's a, you know, big need. So do we want to take a moment for discussion on that item?
Well, I was just sharing what my conversation was this morning with the Sun River Rotary and how they felt that the homeless population was exploding. And actually, one of my first questions was from a disabled veteran who has a home. But he says, Patty, I know there's lots of veterans that don't. And anyway, so I was explaining, this project really has been set up for 15. And I, what would be the, of course, the $100,000. We've got to make this happen. The need is there. These people have served our country. And definitely, if we can help transition them back where we have over 100 homeless veterans in our county, it's, you know, this is a first step. And hopefully, this one, this project is going to work, and then maybe we can set up another project, you know, to remind the community. We were told by Clackamas that really 15 is really the best number for personalities, for progress. And that's what they've done in Clackamas. They, you know, they have a couple of years' experience with the program, but it's been extremely successful. I believe their last resident was getting ready to transition on. It is, it's a two-year program, but hopefully, we're going to wrap around and those, you know, and then we can bring in more people there. But, you know, definitely, there is a tremendous need in our county. And thanking those people for their service, I think it's only appropriate.
Thank you.
I would say that this is a very important and excellent project for the community. And, you know, to tie off the discussion of the Clackamas example project, I mean, in my mind, one of the key reasons why that project was able to move so fast and has already demonstrated success is because of county investment. You know, in that case, the county basically covered, you know, all the costs of construction and operation of the facility. And, you know, that's why they're, what, a year and a half into, into this already? So I, I very much support the county making this additional investment to, to get this project to the finish line and get it serving, serving the community.
Thank you.
Well, there's clarity for you on your request. I'm glad we took a moment to do that. I'm very supportive also. I mean, one of the exciting things is this, this is a model. You know, people talk about tiny homes. And yes, I just want to do a tiny home. And the tiny home is the easy part. You know, you've got water and sewer. We have land use. We have the grading and the, the control of the area. You know, if it's for, you know, whatever population, how, what does a neighborhood look like? You know, 15 was that magic number that we heard about for just the social interaction. When you go to 20 and 30, all of a sudden, there can be clicks in groups. And that's why 15 was the number. So that's interesting to learn. And we can all learn that together as a community also at this time. So yeah, I'm real excited to be able to help get this thing over the line. And it looks like it's real close. So what's the confidence that this is the final construction number?
We're pretty confident because, you know, all the hard work is behind us. You know, the, the building permits, the grading and excavating, that's a big variable. A lot of our lumber is on hand now. And so, you know, the, the cost of that is-
Stuff's like gold.
Yeah. And the community building is our biggest cost item, you know, $200,000. And the cost of that has gone up $50,000 since we purchased it. So that's why that initial contribution from Deschutes County was so critical, because we got in before the price raise. And that was a 25% price increase that we, that was mitigated because we beat, we beat the increase. The, you know, the building is delayed from April 28th or so till the end of May. So that has an effect on the schedule, which is my next slide.
Well, let's clarify. So, yeah, if we want to make-
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, let's, let's make the business, business.
And do we need to discuss where the money would come from?
Yep, exactly what I was thinking too.
Commissioners, we have an existing ground lease with Heroes Foundation, or an agreement with the Heroes Foundation that specifies the, the contributions that the board has already made to the project. So we may want to, I'm looking at Dave, we may want to do a formal amendment to that agreement to add the additional $100,000. So that would be your formal approval of that additional amount. In terms of where it would come from, we do have discretionary funds available out of either the general fund or unallocated transient room tax. I believe the existing contributions are pegged to the general fund. So just to be clean, that may be the, the place where that would come from.
Yeah, good. I would support that. So for motion, so amending development agreement? So I'm just thinking terminology for right now.
Yeah, I think the, the motion would be to approve the additional $100,000 in direct staff to prepare the appropriate document for signature.
And specify general fund?
Well, that's up to Tom, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Probably.
Are the transient room tax that we have $3 million more than we expected to have because we were so conservative? If, if that's a possibility. I don't know. Do we have to make that decision today?
No.
Okay. So I move that we amend our original funding agreement and add an additional $100,000 for the Veterans Heroes Project to complete their construction.
Well, second.
There we go. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. There we go. Now we'll move on to the next slide.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your generosity.
Congratulations. Yeah, thank you for your efforts.
Yeah. We, we do think it's going to be a model, you know, for the community and other communities. We're already having discussions with cities like Boise and, and some towns in Washington about, you know, how do we do it? What, what did we learn? How can we do it faster, better, all those things? And so we're trying to help out. And I think in Bend, there's a multitude of opportunity for more communities like this.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask, how, how open source is your project going to be when, when, when you're, when you're done?
100% open source.
That'll be great.
I was a software engineer, so I completely understand the benefit of open source. And, you know, we, we have a homeless opportunity problem, whatever you want to call it, all over America, in, in every large city and every small city. And, you know, we learned from Clackamas, and maybe we made some tweaks. And we learned from the Kansas City Veterans Community Project. And everyone gets better each time we do this, and it probably is faster. And this one is especially unique because of all the, the constituents that participated. It wasn't completely funded by the county like Clackamas. It wasn't completely funded by the community like Veterans Community Project. It was all three stakeholders participating together. And, and the state also made your participation with 4212. So it's, it's a great roadmap to reuse this, this model. And I'm very, very happy to help any communities that are interested. In terms of timing, I mentioned our community building is a little bit delayed. And so we're looking at, you know, first occupancy in mid-May of, of our first five shelters. I'll just cut to the chase because I want to be considerate of your time. And, you know, 100% occupancy with 15 shelters occupied in mid-June. You know, this subject to change, as all construction schedules are. This is my update from what you are looking at, because since I produced the presentation, we learned about the community building being delayed. You know, initially, we broke this project into two phases so that we could go live with the, the shelters and start serving the homeless community more quickly than waiting for the community building to come in. Now the timing is so close because of the fact that COBO was able to house a lot of homeless veterans during the pandemic in hotels. So they had some emergency money. And that, that reduced the urgency to get this project going, you know, maybe with a couple of shortcuts. And so that, you know, by, by, by aligning our schedule with the community buildings and the shelters simultaneous, I think it's a better final product. And, you know, what that means though is until we get the community building, we're not going to go live. I mean, that's how we look at it today. You know, COBO is on the call. I should have mentioned that too. JW Terry and Kathy Skidmore are on the call. And, you know, if we collectively choose to occupy the shelters in advance of the community building, then, you know, we have that opportunity to, to think about it in the next 30 days. But if you go out and kick the tires at the site, you'll see, you know, daily progress, a lot of digging. We should be wrapping that up pretty soon. And, and like I said, our first shelters will be constructed hopefully this weekend. So that's all I had, other than, you know, it's too long a list to read, and it's growing basically every minute. You know, we get so much support from the community, a lot of stakeholders here, everyone in town, a bend in Deschutes County, really rolling up their sleeves and making this happen. This is not, you know, being done by one person or one organization. It couldn't be done by one, one person or one organization. It's, it's succeeding because everyone is taking a hold of the project and, and participating actively. So we have, you know, tremendous gratitude for everyone on the list, for Deschutes County for kicking this off, and, and the City of Bend for being very supportive in the application process and the Affordable Housing Fund and the, I did mention the construction excise tax, which is, which came out the end of December to support homeless services on an ongoing basis. So the county has committed $100,000 in the MOU for annual funding of operations, which is phenomenal. That means that we build it, we can operate it. And, and that really is, you know, just overwhelmingly positive for this project. And we asked the city, what can we do on the city side to support homeless services as well? You know, is there any money in, in the budget for that kind of stuff? And, you know, there wasn't. And so this construction excise tax was passed to be able to provide operational support for, for the homeless. So bottom line, all that is, you know, everyone's working together on this project. We really appreciate what Deschutes County has done, and the City of Bend, and Parks and Rec, and all of the other folks up there. You know, Bend is a very generous community. It wants to work on this issue. It wants to support its veterans. It wants to work on the homeless problem. And it's showing it by, you know, putting its, its words, deeds, and finances, you know, towards this project. So thank you very much for your time, and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any thoughts or questions?
Oh, I just wanted to say that the fence that you built is, really looks first class. So thank you for making that for that community that lives on the other side and really I'm doing it right. So it's, it won't be leaning, hopefully. It, it looks like a great fence. So.
Yeah, those posts are what, two feet in the ground in concrete? Two or three feet, 30 inches maybe?
Okay, that sounds like-
Yeah, it's not going anywhere. And, you know, that was the idea. That was our commitment to that community at the beginning is, you know, it looks like there's an opportunity. We're going to be doing some construction out here. Maybe we can fix this and help out. And it's been great working with that community. Everybody's on the same, same team. We have our community working group. We meet once a month, represented from the sheriff, represented from the county. Tony, Commissioner Bollinger's been to, to one of those meetings. And, you know, we're just having an open dialogue on how things are going, where we're going, and, and what we can do to help and, and make this a success. So, you know, we'll have another one of those meetings here later in the month. And then we'll, you know, keep rolling with that and listening to, you know, our neighbors and making sure we have a, a good success.
Well, thank you. Once you realize that those units from, what, Sweden, didn't quite work, that you still use that design, and they still are going to be attractive, and I, I think that's really great for the project. It's, it's going to look very nice. And I, you know, definitely, I think the neighbors will appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think the, the veterans will appreciate it too. I mean, there's, you know, you can have pride of ownership within this community. You know, it's been put together to feel like home, to feel like a community, a place where you can grow and, and be with friends and, and make some progress. And, and I feel like, you know, when, when we take care of, you know, good quality, you know, good design, you know, for the veterans that served our country, you know, that then, you know, we're doing the right thing.
Definitely, you're doing the right thing. Your dad must be really proud.
Yeah, he probably won't shut up about it.
Well, I think that's-
You knew that already.
No, that's okay. No, it's, it's great.
Any thoughts?
What about your mom?
Sorry, yeah. Sorry, yeah.
Yep, it's good.
I I wanted to ask when when if if and when there might be a good time to come out and visit, to 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 see progress or see some, you know, constructed units and.
Yeah, that's a great question. In fact, the city council, Bend City Council, asked the same question. And I'm targeting, let's say, late May for that because hopefully then our community building will be there and our shelters will all be completed and maybe even some landscaping and paving in by then. You know, right now, it's it's, you know, torn up. And and so it's fun going out and seeing all the construction machinery working. But yeah, I would say we would love for for to have a formal visit with the commissioners and staff anytime. We're always open. And it's your property, so we're happy to take you to your property. But yeah, it, you know, a formal a formal tour probably mid to late May.
Right? Yeah. Do you think by that time, some of those youth crews will still be working on some of the units or?
Yeah, we're hoping so. You know, we're we're staging it, you know, five, three builds of five shelters. And the last five will be built towards the back end of May. And so that should give us an opportunity. We actually are, you know, trying to align the schedule so that we can get the youth working on as much as possible. You know, we don't want to rush the schedule and have them miss this opportunity. You know, it's a vocational opportunity for them. It would be good for their careers and their and their, you know, skills for the rest of their life. Whereas, you know, some of us that, you know, build houses all the time, you know, it's not as good of an impact for us. I mean, we love doing it, right? Because it's for the homeless veterans. But even better if we can get the youth working on, you know, as much as possible.
Yeah, yeah. No, if I, you know, if there is a way to 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 see some of the youth in action or or, you know, or have some of them visit and tell us about their work, that would be that'd be an additional bonus in my mind, just.
Well, we'll just plan for that to happen that way.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
So in the big picture, yeah, this this will be a practice in, you know, how does a facility like this flow over time? So you're you're building it. COVO is going to be operating, but it's a community asset also, you know, setting the culture of a of a 15-unit service facility. Because I could imagine people are going to dream about, okay, well, this is a tiny home community. How do we do this in a slightly different form? You know, somebody might want to really either invest in something like this because we have calls on land use all the time saying, let's have a cottage opportunities on properties or the second ADU on rural properties. So there's all kinds of aspects to this. So this is going to be a great example of this little courtyard setting, these small units and a common support building. So pretty exciting. We're getting there.
Indeed, it is. And we appreciate all the support from Dushes County.
Yeah, well, thank the Bend Heroes Foundation. Thank COVO for your your leadership on this project.
There we go.
Welcome. It's been a real joy. I tell you, it's it's a real joy to work on it.
Thank you.
Is JW on the call? I wonder if he wanted to say anything. Do you see him? Our Cathy, no?
They may they may be watching without.
Yeah, they're watching. Yeah, there you go. Okay. All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We do have a 10 o'clock scheduled COVID update. I think we can possibly start five or 10 minutes early, but probably not 20 minutes early. So we do have opportunity for other items at this time. Or where do we go from there? So Tom, if you have anything, yeah?
All right. Thanks, commissioners. Just one quick item. As you know, we are scheduled. We don't always hold them, but we're scheduled to meet quarterly with the Redmond City Council for a joint meeting. We had one not too long ago, a couple months ago. I was just chatting with Keith, Keith Witkowski, the Redmond manager, about, you know, the next one is tentatively or or on the calendar for May 11th, so about a month away, on whether you were interested in in having that meeting. And if so, if you had any ideas or suggestions for agenda items for that meeting. You don't have to necessarily, you know, rack your brain today for it, but I wanted to kind of get that on your radar. And it's some indication from you on whether you'd like to go ahead and hold that meeting and and what you might want to talk about.
One thing that comes to mind is the county's TSP process is kicking off. So maybe a little update on that, just the scope of it and the timing. And then transportation projects. You know, I know there's already discussion about, you know, if there's the American Recovery Plan dollars from the federal government through the state and local dollars, there may be triggering a few projects. And this would just be at the highest level, obviously. But, you know, just compare notes on what the priorities might be. And then so the question is, would we be aiming for a meeting or not also? So that was just an idea off the top of my head. And I'm, it'd be nice to meet with them. So yeah, let's look for a few agenda items is my thought, too.
Yeah, I'm I'm I'd be excited to to visit with them in May. And I I one thing I'd be interested in hearing is an update on the Skyline Village project, if there, you know, if there's been any any motion since the last time we we talked.
And of course, I'm sure it will be another Zoom meeting, so.
Well, fairgrounds and meet in a big room or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, possibly in person in a in a large facility.
Enough to get outside.
Yeah, or yeah, outside even. Yeah, whatever.
Well, let's not go that far.
Yeah, so let's keep that open for discussion.
Yeah, the fairgrounds would be nice.
I'm happy to talk to Keith about that and see if they're maybe interested in doing that.
Yeah, I think there's one counselor I haven't even met yet. So that'd be good. Okay, yeah, so generally look forward to it. And then if there's any other ideas, we can add it to the list.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other updates?
I was on the call for House Bill 3308, the one that Chief Roger Johnson has written. And there were several fire bills they were discussing. It sounded like they know they have to do something. And they're sending them to ways and means to kind of look at everything at that point in time. So that was yesterday afternoon. And so we'll see. But it 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 just it's having a Zoom meeting like that seems that they're they're missing, you know, really the in-person, when things happen, when you testify in person, there's something there that we're really missing this year. And it's really unfortunate that that's the way things are going on, so.
Kind of along those same lines, I'm planning to give testimony tomorrow evening for Senate Bill 762, which is the the most recent incarnation of of the wildfire bill that Senator Golden has been working with the governor's office on. And I believe that the mayor, the mayor of Bend and sister city councillor Jennifer Letts are also going to give testimony in in support.
So we can kind of look at the context of that a little bit, too, just understand what the, you know, how it's maturing. What are the items in there?
Yeah.
Interesting.
It, as far as I can tell, it's a lot like 248, SP 248, which has now kind of been set aside, along with 287, which was the governor's original package. Those have both been set aside. And a lot of the elements have carried over to 762. And then added this fuels conservation corp. I I'm forgetting the exact name of it, but, you know, basically a conservation corps for, you know, teenagers up through, you know, mid 20s, 20s people to, I believe, help with, you know, kind of their building corridor, you know, helpful with defensible space and fuels reduction projects on, you know, more, you know, larger forested properties and and public lands. And then there's also some discussion about creating an advisory body, an advisory committee in association with this. And that's kind of responding to some of the desires, preferences that were expressed early on in the form of the H, the the House Bill HB 2722.
So that was Senate Bill 762, you're saying?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the 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 discussion about, you know, whether there's going to be an advisory group created or not. I think that's still open at this point.
Okay, anything else?
That was it.
Yeah, that was it. So I was able to dial into the Eastern Oregon caucus call yesterday morning. I guess, yeah, there's no takeaways, just confirming that I was able to, you know, hear from the Eastern Oregon Legislative Body, other commissioners from around the state. I did mention that we were able to put in our list of capital projects to Senator Lintecum. You know, there was an email I CC'd everybody on, which was just kind of some of our projects that we have in our queue already. I did mention that, yeah, if there was one of the reality, well, there's a story here. So I was down in Southern Dushes County Transfer Station the other day, just recycling. And the attendant, I know well, she mentioned that people are asking for a scale there. So as in, you know, it's an opinion about is that one yard or two yards? And how much does it cost? Oh, it's just a, you know, one moment. But that reminded me that, you know, Negas is our big project with a scale and and a little bit larger. So I mentioned that as, you know, if that was funded, it would bring up the project quicker, which would let us invest in other solid waste investments. So it's just one of the positions that I had shared on the phone. And then also, ready, the Redmond Economic Development Board meeting this morning. So I was able to attend that, get a little update from the county's point of view. And I mentioned the 17th Street and Negas overlay project that's going on. And also that transfer station upgrade and the the North County Campus discussions. In fact, we have a capital list that we're starting to to take action on. So just a little update that I was able to provide there. So there was a request for taking a position on the the gun bill talks about, you know, concealed carry limitations or whatever. So I'd be interested in doing that. And I know it's just one of those topics that gets people riled up, obviously. But, you know, I I'm just, as one commissioner, I'm just advocating that we might want to either, you know, take a position or have discussion or do what we need to do. And I guess really, from the legislative point, is is there any action on that as the possibility of proceeding or not? Because what I've seen in the past is, it really gets people riled up, but there's possibly not a strong possibility it's going to pass, as in, we need to know the lay of the land over there. So yeah, maybe some analysis on that. And I'm just mentioning it here is because there's been some communication to us on, to me on that. I don't know the other commissioners. But maybe we'll bring it up on Friday, just a possibility.
And I did meet with, I had a Zoom conference yesterday with moms. And they had, they were representing a couple different positions, but they were for the Second Amendment, which, you know, they were for that. But they really felt like, looking at the suicide numbers and looking at historical way guns have been locked up, that really, we need more of a public information campaign about, you don't lock your guns up in a glass-branded cabinet with the key on the top. That is not, you know, that's not the way that people should be doing it. And if their gun is locked up, you know, it should, the key should be somewhere else where the kids all don't know it. I mean, a lot of people grew up knowing exactly where the key was, and maybe the cabinet wasn't even locked. And so it was a very dynamic group of people that have had firsthand experience and then looking at suicide numbers in Dushes County and what we need to do. And the other part of the discussion was actually about medicine and how parents really need to be careful of where they store their medicine and access for their kids. So I thought that was quite, you know, it's a big problem. And we know you don't flush your pill, you don't flush your pills down the toilet because then that affects the fish. So yeah, I mean, remember that's what they used to say, oh, just flush them. No, you don't want to do that. You can actually return your extra pills to, I believe the hospital takes it down, don't they? Or you could probably leave them with the sheriff's office. But you really want to be careful with your kids because a lot of kids get into things. And and then you never know, you want to be really careful when your kids are going to go to someone's else's house. What are they doing, you know, with the guns? Are they locked up away from the kids and and the meds? So it was a very interesting conversation, which I'm going to talk to Janice Garso about it and see what we can do to make a difference there.
Yeah, public outreach for sure.
I guess I would say, you know, to follow what Commissioner Dare is saying, the piece of gun legislation that I'm most interested in this session is the safe storage bill, which I I'm I'm in favor of. And this other this other bill dealing with concealed carry in in public buildings, you know, it's, on the on the one hand, when the legislature is talking about what they want to happen in the legislature legislature buildings, I, you know, I feel like that's up to them, you know, that, you know, I don't want to be, you know, I don't think we should take a position on that. But on the other hand, if they're also kind of providing the opportunity or, you know, opening the door to discussion about whether we want to do something similar on county properties or on school district properties or in the city building, then I, you know, that that does sort of draw us into the into the debate on 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 that piece of legislation. And I, I, again, I'm I'm just not really interested in in that discussion. I I'm, I am very interested in this safe safe storage bill. But.
A little prep. So I was I was already asking the media. And I was like, well, we haven't discussed it. And yeah, so I mean, that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so.
But I mean, it does, it, you know, if if basically the way that the the bill is written right now, it says, you know, and and local governments can decide to do this, too. I mean, if we didn't want to, if we didn't want to have that choice, like if we didn't want to even, you know, be considered like that, we could send them, we could send in testimony asking them to just make it about them, you know, like just make this about the state legislature and don't, you know, leave leave local governments out of it. That would be that'd be one thought on taking a somewhat neutral stance.
Association of Oregon Counties, remember, I don't know if it was the legislative call or one of the committees. Sorry, I don't know much. But there was, somebody made the motion, so it came to a vote. And it was just black and white, you know, majority by far, the, you know, kind of the rural counties. But there's a couple high-density counties that are like, yeah, we need this. We need to stop people from, you know, having this opportunity. So I I don't want to put too many words to it. But there was like a couple couple high-density counties that were all into this. And everybody else was like, no, this doesn't make sense to our area.
Right.
It's it's just like that.
The vote actually came out of the legislative committee unanimous. When it got to the general vote, it was 33 to 7. So and yes, there were a couple highly populated areas that were really upset. But it could create a lot of confusion, you know?
And that makes me wonder.
One area to the next, a change.
If I was living there, would I see it like that? I just don't have a feel for it. But I mean, it doesn't look the same.
And I mean, for the legislature, they've had, I mean, you know, they've had armed people kind of, you know, protesting and and, you know, sometimes very aggressively and violently protesting right at their door. I mean, we haven't had that, we haven't had that here. So I mean, it's, again, like, to the extent that they want to pass rules for the legislative buildings, you know, I I think, you know, I I don't, I don't think that that we have a a place weighing in on that choice. But to the extent that this affects, you know, whether we have, whether we have to make these kinds of choices or not, I that that brings us into it.
So I'll pull, you know, if it's one or two or three bills, we'll look at them on Friday, see if there's a position to be taken. Okay.
I'd rather, I'd rather spend my time talking about the appropriation, the federal appropriation stuff on Friday. But if we can do both, then.
Just just one quick FYI add-on to comment Commissioner Adair made just a minute ago in terms of expired prescriptions. There is a drop box in the lobby of the sheriff's office on the north end of town. There's also one right across the parking lot here in our pharmacy, which is available for the public to utilize also in terms of dropping off expired prescription medications there. So that's a very important public health topic that our. So that's a very important public health topic that our public health staff has advocated for as well. So there are two locations, county locations for expired medications here in bed.
Thank you, Tom, for clearly pointing out where people can do that, because it is really important. It's spring cleaning time, I was reading how to make your house, whatever, more pleasant, and that was one of the things that said you needed to do, was go through your medicine cabinet and clean it out. So I'm sure I'm going to do that, right?
Does aspirin expire?
Baby aspirin?
Well, we were just, we were having this discussion, there's a bottle, you know, just aspirin, and it's way expired, and I'm like, no, it's probably still good.
The effectiveness probably is...
Yeah.
Is it going to kill you?
But shredding, yeah. The shredding days are drop-off times also. So the sheriff's office does shredding, secure document shredding, and then there's prescription drop-off at that locations, too, which they do in La Pine and Sisters around the county, so, an opportunity for disposal. So at this time, being 10 to 10, let's see if we can switch gears and get in, prepare at least for our next COVID-19 update item.
Is our system not working again today?
Oh, may just, yeah.
Oh, it was just asleep.
So we'll see if, yeah, the staff is available, so Dr. Conway, Molly Wells-Darling. And if not, we'll stand by for a moment, but there we go, Nahad Sadrizodi. Okay, yeah, so we'll just stand by, is there anything else? I guess we're just going to take a break for a moment. Not officially, we're just going to stand by.
Oh, maybe I could ask, is Nahad on? Maybe I could just ask him a question. Nahad, when we had 145 positive cases, I think it was like, the end of October, how many people were in the hospital at that moment in time? I just would like to compare it, because I know we only have four in there today, and I just thought, well, looking back, that's probably pretty similar to where our numbers are now. And I just wondered if the hospitalization is less.
Should be.
Hi, Commissioners, good morning. We're still kind of organizing ourselves, so apologies that I heard Commissioner Dare's question. Please give me a moment. I don't have a great memory from October, even yesterday, I'm not sure what I did, so...
This is the pre-COVID-19 discussion session, or...
Well, I have, I think I have 14 binders, so I could go and find it, but of course, I hadn't looked it up. I didn't know if there's any way you can pull it up, Nahad?
So you were asking...
I can look in my binder.
You were asking for hospitalizations on the week of 10/25, 10/31, where it was 145 cases?
Right, I was just curious to know if...
And then, we've learned that hospitalizations lag a little bit from no published cases. Remember, there's that offset where the people that are going to get acute may end up in the hospital a week later.
Correct. Correct.
And I would...
So I'm actually opening up my October presentation to see if I can get that number for you.
And I would, I would hope that we, with our very high rates of vaccination among seniors, that, you know, the people are most vulnerable to being hospitalized from a COVID case now, a lot of them are vaccinated, so...
Yeah.
Correct.
So I was just notified that we could take a few moments for a financial update, sounds like Greg Munn may be available. So we are just going to do that, we'll switch gears. The question's been asked, Nahad, and we'll get back for information in a little while on that. So Greg, Greg Munn. We can switch gears on the video for Greg Munn, possibly, or see if he's available to join us.
I have the information whenever.
Oh, thank you, that was really fast, Nahad. Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hello.
I thought I would just jump in here real quick, only take a couple of minutes of your time, just give you a quick update on the financial side here, what's going on with pandemic funding. Two things, one, I want to let you know that we, just this week, or late last week, actually received our final CARES Act reimbursement funding payment. That's $487,000. So with that payment, that reimbursement of CARES funding through the state, we have fully expended our complete allotment. Once we have those dollars allocated based on the allocation spreadsheet that you all approved, I'll bring that back to you, just as a way to reconcile and finalize that whole project, and I'll bring that back to you. But I just want to let you know, we've received the money. And additionally, we are working on a potential contract through the state to process the FEMA reimbursement request for the Vaccine Center. And it will give us some additional flexibility that we wouldn't have on our own if we were to apply directly through FEMA for those funds, and should significantly reduce our administrative overhead in terms of actually putting the work together. So the OHA has extended this offer for counties throughout the state, and I believe that most of us are looking heavily into it in terms of taking it up. What that means is, is because we have a contract review, we'll likely be bringing back, bringing that back to you for approval, as it is a grant. That was real quick, only a couple minutes, are there any questions for me before I jump off again?
We'll see, it's kind of a spreadsheet accounting of the, it was $6 million-something dollars for that, all those dollars that flowed last year, and that'll be...
6.4 million.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
I just kind of round up and round...
It's been 25 million, but it wasn't.
Yep. Okay.
So Greg...
Exactly, I'll, I should be bringing that back to you within the next month, I would imagine, or less.
Great.
So Greg, as time goes on, and there's still not a lot of guidance being offered on the American Rescue Plan, state and local dollars, you know, I'm increasingly assuming that that means that those are just highly flexible funds, that they're making discretionary for us. I mean, is that, is that the way that we should be thinking about that at this point? Or should we still be waiting for, this is eligible and this is not?
Audio.
Sorry about that. Yeah, Commissioner Chang, I think you're exactly right. The, there's only a couple of items that they've excluded. One is pension funds, you can't use the money to backfill pension funds, or pension costs, they should say. And the read I have so far, and David Givens has been great about, he finds articles and shares those with all of us, who are kind of constantly digging in, trying to absorb as much of the new information that's out as it comes out, almost on a daily basis, to help us put some parameters around it. But to this, at this point, it's, I think discretionary is a pretty good word in terms of how those funds can be applied. And just so that you know, as we're going through reviewing the department budgets with Tom, the budget officer, we're actually thinking about how those funds could possibly be used, and adding those to a list that at some point we'll be bringing before you, pretty soon, I would imagine, in terms of making some decisions on how those dollars can actually be spent.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Tom, did you have something that you want to...
Thank you for the...
I was just going to say that the other exclusion that they made clear on is that you can't cut taxes with any ERP funds.
Heard that as well.
Okay, thank you very much for the update. At this time, we'll do the COVID-19 Public Health Update, welcoming everyone back.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Conway, Health Services Director, I have with me Molly Wells-Darling, and who's our Instant Command Deputy Commander, and Nahad Sadrizodi, who's the Public Health Director.
Well, I've got one other item for us, Dr. Conway, so this has been notified that this is National Public Health Week. On top of a pandemic, we have Public Health Week right now. So I'd like to take a few moments and thank our staff and the Public Health Department for the amazing work over the year. So if you don't mind, just the concept that this is population health, you know, and a pandemic just happens to be that situation, but we do do this year-round, we have professional staff, population health, reducing risks, aiming at, you know, different diseases or, you know, items that, you know, reduce the health of our community. So just taking a moment, saying thank you for National Public Health Week, any thoughts?
Yeah, and also just the whole idea within that, when you're looking at populations and you're doing, you know, a lot of what we do in our Public Health Division is prevention-oriented, helping us, helping us keep people from getting to the point where it, you know, where getting them back on track is far more expensive and far more challenging, and also prevent, you know, preventing the impacts of certain kinds of health challenges to the broader community. You know, things like, you know, communicable disease epidemics are one thing, you know, epidemics of substance use disorder, you know, being another example. So it's a great opportunity to celebrate the work that, and honor the work that our Public Health Division is doing, and that our community is doing, to maintain the overall health of the population in our community.
And I want to acknowledge the fact that our vaccination report is the top of the state for those 65 and older, the fact that we have 82% of them vaccinated. Clearly, that comes from our Public Health Department's messaging, what an excellent job you've done, reaching out to community, and actually, from the second survey, changing people's minds about the vaccine. I appreciate that, and I thank all the 1,100 volunteers that have stepped up to help our Public Health Department, because our department could not do this alone. Thank you to the entire community, and the community for listening to the messaging that we try and give on a weekly basis to help keep our community safe. Remember, wash your hands, distance, and it's really, you know, you can see the results that we have so many people that are vaccinated, people that are the most vulnerable have been vaccinated. And it looks like we're going to be able to have anyone over, what, 16 vaccinated in the very near future. So thank you to the Public Health, thank you to your whole team.
And one special note for Nahad Sadrizodi, I mean, he joined us right as this pandemic got started, but, I mean, he is the professional and the leader of the Public Health Division of Deschutes County's Health. So Nahad, thank you very much, you know, I mean, you are the professional, and you do a great job at, you know, as I say, during a pandemic, but hopefully we'll get back to other basic public health items in your career here at Deschutes County.
Yeah, and you got thrown right in the very deep end of the pool, day one.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thanks, well, following up on that metaphor, Nahad has certainly proven his proficiency at being able to swim.
There we go.
I would like, as the Public Health Administrator for the county, I would like to acknowledge your role, Commissioners, as the Public Health Authority, which has, from my perspective, two important roles, one is the statutory one, which is oversight, and that includes the oversight and feedback on technical requests and information we provide, as well as the funding oversight. And then also, a very important and often unsung role of elected officials is the public messaging of complex scientific messages through what we call translation, which is taking complicated scientific things and reducing them down to something that citizens can readily understand. And we really appreciate all of you being very involved in that during this pandemic year that we've been experiencing. With that, I will plow ahead with our presentation.
Yes, please. So there was a question on the first slide before we got going here, that Commissioner Dare asked Nahad, so there'll just be an extra little bullet point of information to come up.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure, can you see the slides? And I'm not sure I followed what you're saying, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was just introducing, so there was a slight conversation at 10 minutes before the hour. Commissioner Dare asked hospitalizations relative to the numbers from the 10/25 to 10/31. So the next slide, we were just referring to one of the weeks where the number of cases were about the same as we are today.
Okay, so when we get to that, we can talk about that. Okay, so I already introduced Molly Wells-Darling. This is our case numbers, and I'm sorry, I'm looking at scans, the way that my computers are set up, I have to look at a different screen, that doesn't, for some reason, the Zoom isn't showing us, I mean, the screen, so I don't mean to be, appear distracted. So our case numbers have gone up again, 151 cases in the last full week, last Sunday, the 20th through the 3rd. And I do want to add a footnote, which is that our case investigation team did follow-up on your request, Commissioner Dare, and the 13 cases which were attributed to the prior week have been adjusted in OHA's records. Unfortunately, that has not affected the trajectory for our risk categorization. This is the age group distribution, and...
Pardon me, Dr. Conway, so this was the question, it was on the last slide, and Nahad had a bit of information, it was the number of hospitalizations.
Yeah. Is it okay, George?
Yeah, I thought we had a, don't we have a hospitalization curve, though?
We do, but since Commissioners are asking, let me just provide them the information. Commissioner Dare was asking about hospital admissions back in October, November, and from a very quick look that I had, it looks like the latter part of October, we were having around six to eight admissions, roughly, I mean, this is average numbers. And then as we moved into early to mid-November, those numbers doubled in terms of admissions at the hospital, at the St. Charles Medical Center. The other thing, George, quickly, because the Commissioners' slides will slightly vary from the previous slide on cases, we did have a confirmed death due to COVID that's added to the slide that you presented, so we now have 71 deaths, whereas Commissioner's slide will show 70.
Okay, thank you. So shall I refer to the order of the slides?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we're up into 150 this last week. This is the age distribution, and you all may recall that early on, the concentration of the epidemic or pandemic as expressed in our county was more middle-aged and older folks, and since then, has moved down, so that what we might call the centroid, the largest number of cases are in older teens and young adults. This is, it's an interesting slide, so this looks at the age, and I'll explain what this is. So the colors are for different weeks, so in each of these bars, small bar charts, we're reading from left to right. So the blue is the first full week in March, the orange is the second full week in March, et cetera, third week, and then this is the week that traverses March and April, the most recent week that we have data for. And you can see that there has been a steady increase in teens up through people in their 50s, and the marked increase has been in the young adults, 20 to 29, and a very sharp increase this last reporting week, and a substantial increase the week before. So many of the new caseloads are attributable to these young adults, older teens, and then with diminishing return as we get, as we get older. So we believe that this may reflect some of the increasing activity as well as spring break, time will tell. What we don't know is how much effect the variant strains that are causing havoc around the rest of the country are contributing to this, we're awaiting better cross-sectional data for that in Oregon. This is our... data for that in Oregon. This is our COVID testing data. You can see that we've had a very modest increase in number of tests, but we do continue to increase the number of tests on a percentage basis that are positive. And this is consistent with the picture that we would see of increasing cases. This is our hospitalizations. We continue to have few hospitalizations locally in the St. Charles system and very few from Deshute. As of yesterday, we had, we had, there was one individual hospitalized from Deshute County. Nahad, did you, did you see the Epi, Epi data for this morning?
It was four today.
Yeah, four, four admissions, yes.
There's four, four from Deshute's or four for St. Charles?
Four admissions, yeah, total.
But, and--
It was four total--
Four total, which is from the tri-county area.
Okay, fine. Do we know how many total of the census is from Deshute County?
Less than five.
Okay, thank you. This is the risk-based framework for counties. And we have been notified that as of Friday, Deshute will, if you will, migrate into, back into the high-risk county status, which does add some additional requirements for spacing, reminders about masks, as well as a reduction in the number of persons that can be in, in different types of public settings. We'll know, we'll know more as time goes on, but this is clearly attributable to our increasing case rate, and it, it wasn't the, the margin call that we thought it might be when we were looking at last week's data. So the, the messaging of this is, is consistent with the inherent messaging and the risk, the risk scheme, which is to continue social distancing, facial coverings, good hygiene, and then particularly now that it's getting warmer, take advantage of fresh air. So those that do want to congregate, especially if it's not with family members and whatnot, the best way to do that is appropriately distanced and masked, unless of course you're drinking or eating at the moment, at, at appropriate distance outdoors. Couple of other things that we wanted to bring up today. This is partially an answer to Commissioner DeBones' questions about the overall impact of COVID-19. So it was just an MMWR published in the last week that summarizes the leading causes of death for the United States in 2020. This comes out in a National Center for Health Statistics, from the National Vital Statistics System. And you can see that heart diseases, as, as typical, contributed almost 700,000 deaths last year, cancer, about 600,000 deaths, and in 2020, COVID, almost 350,000 deaths. Now, these two are, are essentially annualized because there's a fairly steady death rate. Because COVID deaths didn't gain much momentum until partway into the year, a better comparison for this would be the annual death rate, which exceeded 500,000 persons by the time we got to the anniversary of the initial, initial rise in cases in the United States as we, as we discussed in, in early March. So the annual death impact from COVID during this pandemic year that we're just, just beyond the cusp of, has been about 100,000 less than the annual burden from cancer deaths and about 200,000 less than the annual burden of heart disease. So it's a very substantial number of deaths. And this compares quite disfavorably to, for example, influenza, which has had a range of deaths from about 15,000 to about 60,000 with an average annual mortality of about 35,000 in the United States over the last decade. So there is some good news, and that is that the, the two mRNA COVID-19 vaccines, that's the Pfizer and the Moderna ones that we've been giving as the primary vaccinations, look lay, are highly effective in preventing vaccination, that, sorry, preventing infections in real-world conditions. So what they did is they followed 4,000 healthcare personnel, first responders, essential workers, had them tested weekly for the virus, and then compared those who had been vaccinated and not. And those who were fully vaccinated were 90% less likely to be infected. And this was also published last week in the More Bredity and Mortality Weekly Report from CDC. So now I'll hand, hand things over to Molly unless there are questions on the, on the data slides.
Yeah, Dr. Conway and Nahad, before we go on to vaccination, I would love to ask a couple of questions about, about the, the recent increase in spread of COVID in our community. I am, you know, my first question is, based on case investigation and contact tracing among, you know, this, this now larger number of people in the last two weeks who are reporting cases of COVID, do we have a sense of how they're getting it? Do we, do we have a sense of what, what behaviors are, you know, or what, or what kinds of gathering are contributing to the uptick in cases?
George, should I answer or? Okay. So thanks, Commissioner. So first of all, it's good to remind the committee members that up until a week or two ago, our department and majority of departments throughout Oregon were working in a surge modality, which was based on the case numbers and the capacity of the department, departments to respond in terms of case investigation and contact tracing. And what that meant practically was that we had to prioritize the number of questions and the groups of people that we would reach out to, to seek information. Since a couple of weeks now, we have moved more towards a comprehensive contact tracing and investigation modality, and that will provide us with more details. So that's the caveat and the context that I'd like to first present. Now, having said that, in the last week, from my understanding after conversations with our contact tracing team, a lot of the cases are emerging from close contact and household transmissions as main sources of infection, which is very rational and frankly logical in terms of how the virus transmits. It's not so different from previous patterns. Also, what we're seeing is that many cases do have traveling specified, which is considered a risk factor for acquiring and transmitting this virus. And that is linked probably closely to the spring break holiday, which Dr. Conway alluded to earlier. There are also several outbreaks that we are seeing contributing to the case numbers in our communities as well. So these are clusters or identified outbreaks where we are able to actually do more in-depth analysis to make the linkages. There were outbreaks in the past too, but again, we weren't doing a full onboard type of investigation to have that information. I hope that clarifies the patterns we're seeing so far, Commissioner.
If I could--
Commissioner Chang, I'll reflect on that a bit. And as has been widely publicized over the last two weeks, CDC, a couple of weeks ago, issued a very cautious, permissive attitude toward travel for those who have been fully vaccinated. And then about a week ago, they made that a little more robust, which is that people that for any reason need to travel, such as to visit a family member, et cetera, with, with some underlying reason, that are fully vaccinated should be safe, but they should continue to wear face coverings when you're in the middle of transportation, maintain social distance, et cetera. So they are safe and they should be relatively safe to, for them as far as the risk of conveying infection to others, but they're still encouraged to wear masks when they visit those family members. So there is some, if you will, advisory advantage to having been vaccinated, but there's no active encouragement for travel for non-necessary purposes at this time. And indeed, especially with these increasing risk rates, travel that's not necessary probably is, is one of the risk factors that could be avoidable.
Right.
And George, sorry, George, just to sort of hone in on that point, commissioners, last week I mentioned that there was a mass testing event, and I just wanted to let you know that we had nearly 200 committee members show up at the event, which we're really grateful for them. We had around seven positive cases, almost half of whom were asymptomatic. So this goes to George's point around asymptomatic, like, we don't have to show symptoms to be transmitting this virus. So we're silent carriers in some regards. I'm sorry I interrupted you, Commissioner Chang, go ahead.
Oh, and actually, to piggyback on that, the, so the aggregate testing rate for that mass vaccination was 3.8%, so very close to the just over 4% we showed on the other slide.
Right. Nahad, that was all great information. Thank you. I, I wanted to drill down a little bit farther and ask, on the travel, the, the travel relationship to the, to the spike in cases, is that people, people from Deshute County traveling out and bringing COVID back? Or is that people traveling into the region and spreading COVID to our community?
George muted, so that probably means I need to answer that. So good question, Commissioner. This has always been an issue for us, frankly. We haven't been able to, because of the way the database is set up, we're not really able to have really good understanding of this, but maybe things have changed and I have missed the boat on that. What I know is that we typically reach out to residents of Deshute for follow-up, and we understand their behaviors. It's difficult for us to really have a sense in terms of non-Deshute residents and their travel patterns into our community. This has come up a number of times, especially during fall, and we were trying to get a better sense from the state around, maybe if they could provide us a holistic picture for the entire state. I hope my information is not outdated, but it's something that I'll definitely follow up to see if there has been any progress in this regard.
So there is one thing, other than the, the additional hazard posed by being in public transportation, the, whether it's aircraft or bus or train, the advice for traveling and visiting are basically the same, which is that vaccinated individuals are much less likely to acquire or transmit the disease, but still should remain cautious. So for both traveling and visiting, we're not encouraging that unless it, it's for some purpose at this juncture. I think as, over the next few weeks, we'll be able to sort out whether or not the increase, the very sharp increases have been seen in Michigan, where they're basically filling up the ICUs currently, the northeastern corridor, which had very bad experience last, a, a year ago, last winter, is having very high rates. There does seem to be a predominance now of this variant strain, the UK1B117. Whether or not that's going to become a broad national pattern, and whether or not that's contributing to the increase that we've seen in Oregon, not just in Deshute, is unknown, but there is more sequencing going on. So we'll have more clarity of that. But until we do, basically, there are some more mobile, if you will, privileges that can be safely encouraged among vaccinated people, but not to the point of non-essential, non-essential visiting and travel. So the, the general recommendations remain the same.
And my, the other, the other kind of fine scale question I wanted to ask about what you've shared was about the outbreaks. So is there any patterns or, you know, like typical kinds of places where outbreaks are occurring, or is it just a variety of settings?
Well, we do have a report that, that we're actually preparing, that the, the contact investigation and tracing team has put together, which details a central feature that a very large party played in a substantial outbreak that was associated with one high school in particular, but with cases in another high school. So big parties are still a bad idea.
Okay.
It's one, one very large scale outbreak we've had recently. We do continue to have outbreaks that are in businesses, within the workers in the businesses, that are associated with smaller gatherings as well. But certainly the thing that we really want to actively discourage is large gatherings, and that, that includes both informal and, you know, commercial gatherings, and where there's not a very strict adherence to the social distancing, et cetera.
So I could maybe add to that a bit, George, if it's okay. As George mentioned, rightfully so, certainly, a lot of the outbreaks are linked to some form of social gathering, right? But that's a big term, and how it's defined, of course, might vary. We do see, for example, even sporting events where it's supposed to be outdoors and people are supposed to take precautionary measures. And yet, frankly, those measures are not enforced or people are not necessarily subscribing to them. And thus, it leads to transmission, especially when distance amongst people is compromised and they're sharing the same air. Even some institutions, highly respected institutions, which have done a fantastic job of mitigating transmission, like faith-based institutions, we are seeing some emerging concerns from those places where perhaps people are putting their guards down, and it's really important to continue to be, double down on some of these preventive measures. So these are a couple of emerging patterns thus far.
So I'd be remiss, I think we'd probably all be remiss, if we don't acknowledge how fatigued everyone is from this very protracted siege that's, that's affected our, our nation. And we understand that this is actually a substantial request to people not to assume a normal stance yet. We're optimistic that we will get to some measure of broad immunity, if not effective herd immunity, most likely sometime in the summer, particularly in the fall, once children hopefully will be able to be immunized. But until then, we really don't have much confidence that intermingling of people that don't share the same household without absorbing, observing those precautions doesn't carry a cumulative potential substantial community risk. And it's unfortunate. It's not the position any of us would like to be in, but we're at that point now where there are some demonstrable protections afforded by vaccination, but the majority of the population's not vaccinated yet. And Molly will be giving an update about the, the new eligibility criteria. So with your permission, maybe we move on to that.
My, my, the one other question I did, did want to ask, and it, it relates to vaccination, but it, it goes back to the, the age breakdown of cases. I'm curious, at, at some point, you would expect that if people, a lot of people over 65 have been vaccinated, that we will see cases, you know, in that age group decreasing even further than they, than they have been, you know, in that age bracket in the past. And I'm wondering, so going back to the, you know, trends using age rates for Deshute's population slide, whether you feel like we're already seeing that, or, you know, it still takes two weeks after your second shot to, to get, to reach full, you know, full effectiveness of vaccines, or, you know, are we, are we already seeing from the 60 to 69 up, the, the, the benefits of vaccination? And then, which would lead me to, to, to wonder, you know, if, if then the next group for vaccination is your 45 to 64 with certain conditions, or 45 to 64 with no conditions, you know, how long it'll take before we see, you know, vaccination helping to dampen the, the case numbers in, in various age brackets as we proceed through vaccination?
Sure. Well, we don't, we don't, as a, as a county, we don't have enough information to provide, if you will, existential certainty that we're seeing attenuation in cases in elders just based on vaccination. But we have seen-- But we have seen a decrease, a marked increase in a number of cases, and more markedly nationally in the states that have high vaccination rates, a substantial decrease in hospitalizations of older people, as well as deaths in older people. So we do believe there's a strong association modeling that and going looking. And so, for example, this age data, we can't distinguish in that between the people who have been vaccinated and not. Very high likelihood that people that are being detected in these cases have not been vaccinated, but we cannot distinguish that with the data that we have. But we do know nationally that the number of older adults that are, that are ending up hospitalized and the number of deaths have fallen substantially with broad vaccination. Other countries have seen that. The other thing is, we can't say definitively that the behavior per se of these younger people is implicated in this, or whether the centering of the epidemic now locally in these younger ages below 60 is partially because of a diminution of cases in the older adults.
Interesting. Okay. Yeah, and, and where I'm going with this is, is I, I'm just wondering at what point we can, we can hope that vaccination is going to help, is actually going to be showing up in lower case numbers?
I think we, well, I think we're already seeing that, and I think we'll continue to see it as we vaccinate more people.
Okay. And so, so hopefully this'll, this'll give us an additional leg up or boost as we're trying to get back down from high risk level back to moderate risk level.
So can I jump in for a second, if you allow me? Commissioner, I would be a bit cautious, but I would be cautious in looking at the population or public health impact of vaccination based on number of cases. And the reason is that, amongst other factors, like variants circulating and all that, is that, that what happens usually as we start vaccinating segments of the population, this virus starts manifesting itself in pockets, where groups of people or communities have not been vaccinated yet for various reasons, whether it's by choice, or because they're not eligible yet, or because the vaccine is not necessarily approved for those age groups. So those numbers can, in fact, distract us a bit from the impact of vaccination overall. I would look at hospital admissions as one area, although again, there's the caveat of variants and its impact, as one important indicator how it's impacting our sort of getting out of this pandemic. And then later on, as more and more people get vaccinated and it becomes eligible for younger age groups and what have you, then maybe looking at case numbers would be perhaps more informative.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Poor Molly, sorry, it's been like a ping pong match between George and me, so you, you're up.
So moving on to our vaccination report, and Molly has quite a bit to report.
Great, so we'll talk about some of our data first. Just a heads up on the data that the OHA is working on their system for county-specific data. So the data you'll see here forward is from last week. This is actually the state data of vaccines administered by day per manufacturer. So you'll see that we still have a lot of Moderna and a lot of Pfizer, and just a little bit of Johnson and Johnson. And that is similar to what we're, what we have here in Deschutes County. We had a lot of Pfizer last week. We had some second dose Moderna going out last week, and just a small amount of Johnson and Johnson. So hopefully in the future, we'll see more Johnson and Johnson coming our way. But the good news is that we're seeing an in, a steady increase in vaccines throughout the state, as well as in Deschutes County. Let me go to the next slide. This just shows you that Deschutes County continues to be one of the counties that is vaccinating at a high rate. The dark blue shows those counties that are vaccinating the highest percentage of their county. And then this shows the people who are in the vaccination series, that 17,000 and those, and then those that are fully vaccinated. Again, this is last week's data, so just at the mass vaccination clinic alone, we did about 10,000 more than this. And then you have the pharmacies in, and Mosaic and La Pine communities that are also vaccinating. So next week, we will hope to have updated data for you to see the increase. Go to the next one, George.
Actually, before we go in, I'll just point out that this hasn't been, for lack of diligence on our part, OHA has had a problem with compiling their data, having to do with reconciling zip codes and county, county boundaries. So we are awaiting, awaiting that, that data.
And then this is just the graph that shows us those that are fully vaccinated in the orange, and those, or I'm sorry, the vaccination series is in the orange, and fully vaccinated is in the blue. So total as of the beginning of last week was 58, 55,880 vaccinations that have gone out. We know at least we have about 10,000 more than that, just from the mass vaccination clinic alone. So again, we'll see those updated numbers next week. Currently, we are serving through group seven. So anyone who is a frontline worker is defined by the CDC, and also any household member living with a frontline worker, we are vaccinating now, in addition to multigenerational households and individuals who are 16 on up with medical conditions. We talk about the medical conditions in a minute. One thing that's important for people to know when they go on to pre-register for vaccine, there is an area, we needed to be able to identify individuals who are household family members of frontline workers. The only place we could do that was in occupation. So if you're a frontline worker, family member, household family member, please click on the box in occupation that says you're a household, or you're a family member or frontline worker, and that will get you into the eligibility group. And then the good news is that April 19th, the governor has opened us up for everyone 16 or older to become eligible for vaccines. So we'll talk about that a little bit later on, how you can sign up to get your vaccine. Next slide. This just goes over the underlying health conditions. I think some things to note is that the BMI has changed to 25 and greater rather than 30 and greater. I highly encourage people who don't know what your BMI is to go online to a BMI calculator, and you can find out your BMI. I think some people will be surprised that they, they meet this criteria and can come on in and get their vaccination currently. And then some other things that were added were smoking, current or former smoker, as well as people who are currently struggling with a substance use disorder. So this has expanded. The thing to know about this is when you go on and you register for our preregistration to get on our waiting list, there's boxes that you click, you just click whatever applies to you, and then that gets you into this eligibility group. And then again, next, on April 19th, we will open up to everyone. So you won't have to have any of these move forward.
Molly, a question we've been getting is that people that will become eligible on April 19th, should they wait until April 19th to go on and be registering?
No, so we want everyone pre-registering right now, and we will be going in order of your preregistration. So really, we want everyone that wants a vaccine to get on there. If you end up getting a vaccine somewhere else before you get it with us, that's fine. We'll send you a link, and you won't use the link, and then that link will go to someone else. But the best and easiest way to do this is to go online, and I think that might be our next slide here, George, is to go online at centraloregoncovidvaccine.com. And you can go one more slide forward. When you go on here to this website, there is a preregistration form. You register, this registers you to get on the waitlist for a vaccine. And then when we have vaccine available and you are also eligible, we start sending out links. Now, it's important to know that we send out those links on how many we have. So if we get 3,000 doses of, first doses of vaccine next week, and we have 5,000 people sent, who have registered beyond the waitlist that are eligible, we'll send out the links to the first 3,000. So it may be the following week when you get your link, but you will get a link if you, if you've registered and are on that waitlist. When you do get that link, you have 48 hours to utilize the link. So please do make sure that when you get it, you go on to that website and schedule your vaccine appointment. And I think our next slide actually shows what you'll see once you're pre-registered. So this is, people got a little bit confused. So we updated our messaging to really make it big and bold, that you're set and you're good, you don't need to fill out another preregistration form. So at the end of registering, for your preregistration to be on the waitlist, you're going to see this message, you're all set, you don't need to do anything else, you won't be getting a confirmation email, unfortunately, our system doesn't allow that. So this is what shows you. So you want to either take a picture of this, or write down your confirmation code so that you have this. This shows you that yes, indeed, you are on the waitlist, and when you are eligible, and when there's vaccine available, we'll be sending you a link.
So, and it's a, it's a convenient 32-digit code, alphanumeric code that you can transcribe, so it might be better to take a screenshot of this.
Yeah, super easy there. Okay, and the next. So again, this is the email that you're going to see come from us to you. It's going to be a do not reply at St. Charles, or S C M C dot org. The link expires after 48 hours. And when you get your email, you'll want to schedule over the computer. I just want to note again that you will not be receiving calls asking for your social security number or credit cards, we do not ask for that. You do not need insurance to come out to this clinic. If you have it, please bring it with you, but if you don't have it, that is fine, we do not need that. And there is not a charge for, for the clinic. So it's important just to know that where this email will come from. And also, if you know how to add this to your email addresses, so that the emails don't go to spam, I would check your junk folders just in case you get a link there. Some people have said that's occurred, just based on how email functions. Next slide.
Molly, if you're a, if you're an OSU Beavers fan, you get priority over Ducks, right?
Absolutely not.
Nahad, where do you come up with that?
Oh, boy.
I'm a big Duck fan.
Oh, see, Nahad, you picked up the wrong person.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, so just, just some questions. So if people have questions about anything related to vaccine, your quickest and easiest way is to go to the frequently asked questions page at this website here, deschutes.org/covid19vaccine. That will show some local frequently asked questions, which we're, we're updating. And then also, there's a link that will take you to the overall state frequently asked questions about vaccines. So that would be your best way. The next would be to email ourhealthservices@deschutes.org. We will be, we will have an automatic response that comes to you that has frequently asked questions in it. So hopefully you'll get your question answered that way. But if not, there's also an email that comes to our team, and we have a team of quite a few individuals that are working on answering those emails. And then finally, I just want to point out that the fastest and easiest way to get registered is through our centraloregoncovidvaccine.com. That is the fastest and easiest. Calling our hotline is not the fastest and easiest. And the hotline really, we really, really want that to be for our most vulnerable populations who don't have access to a computer, or who maybe have a hard time navigating a computer. We want to reserve that hotline for people to call there to get that assistance. If you are someone who's calling that hotline because you don't have a computer and need assistance, our hotline staff will help you get pre-registered. And then when your link is available, it will be emailed to our hotline staff, and then we will reach out to you, let you know that your link is available, and then we will work to get you registered with an appointment. It doesn't work, this isn't a hotline where you can just call and sign up for appointments. So just, I want to, I want to point that out, that really, we've had a high volume of calls, and really, the fastest and easiest is through that website on a computer, on your phone is a little more difficult, because there's some date of birth issues. So going to a computer and pre-registering there will be the fastest and easiest way to get on that waitlist. Questions?
I, oh, I have a question, not actually from you, Molly, but perhaps Nahad. Nahad, can you give us the number of Deschutes County residents to date that have been in the hospital? I don't, I don't believe we got that number today. It was like 219, maybe last week?
Yeah, ever hospitalized, Commissioner, is 220.
220, okay. Thank you.
Molly, I got a phone message just yesterday from someone who said that they had, they had pre-registered, and then they didn't see a message to actually schedule an appointment, but then they did see something shortly after that said, you missed your 48-hour window. And if, if we get a call like that, what is the best place to try to plug them in to, to, you know, you know, get re, get rescheduled? You know, short of just saying, okay, pre-register again? Like, is there, is there someplace we can point them to, to, to talk to somebody to try to kind of get, you know, back in the queue?
Well, the fastest, truly, the fastest and easiest way is for them to pre-register again, because once they don't respond to that link, their, their preregistration falls out of the system. They could call the, the hotline, but it's probably going to take longer to get through there. And what they will do is they'll just pre-register them themselves over the phone in order to get that link. So really, the easiest and quickest thing for them to do is to go on and, and pre-register.
Okay.
And actually, so just something I want to emphasize, so because some spam queuing in certain software will relegate something has do not reply to spam filter, people, once they've registered, would be well advised to check their spam filter maybe daily, that, that they haven't missed a message from this. Because this, this is one of those things that could be filtered out, and that, that we just don't have a patch for that right now.
Yep. Thank you, George.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No other questions. Thank you for the update. Let's all work together as a community in these times when we're going to go back up in the
Risk level.
Yeah, risk levels as defined. I know that, yeah, it's, it's being published right now to go into effect on Friday this week.
Thanks very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So at this time, since we were able to do other items, we will recess until 1:00 for our last item of the day. Welcome back. This is our afternoon session for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners on April 7th, 2021. Item number 11, FY22 Video Lottery Fund allocations. Whitney, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hill Administration. Today, we're going to discuss fiscal year 22 video lottery fund allocations. As you know, each year, the board reviews anticipated revenue for the county's portion of video lottery funds, and develops an expenditure plan for those funds that historically has included funding for a variety of activities, including economic development, various projects, and support for service partner organizations. Staff has collected information based on requests for funding for this upcoming fiscal year, and we're prepared to walk through those requests with you using a spreadsheet that you have in your pocket, and that you'll also see on the screen. I did want to note that we've revised the beginning net working capital estimate for fiscal year 22. We're estimating that at $849,000. So you'll see that reflected in a handout that was provided, and also on the screen. We have County Treasurer and CFO Greg Munn joining us by Zoom if the board has questions about kind of money that we're receiving, or forecasting that we're, we're estimating to receive next year. And we also have Sarah Hudson on today's call with us. Sarah is a Health Services employee who does some direct management of our service partner organizations. So in the event that the board has deep questions about service partner activity, she's on deck to help answer those. So I'll go ahead and pause, and I'm happy to, to kind of move forward through the exercise. But does the board have any questions before we begin?
So just acknowledging, it was a year ago that we, we had shut down short-term rentals at some point. So we knew we were affecting this directly by a policy choice. It was a choice to fund economic development. It was a, a choice to fund economic development out of transient room tax, knowing that, you know, this fund might stop also with restaurants being closed. So man, we sure didn't know what was coming last year. And it was, we went very conservative, obviously, offloaded some of the expenses. And now, which is amazing to see, there's, you know, a rollover estimating balance and other revenue that's coming in here. So as I say, we made some pretty aggressive choices last year, supported the traditional investments we had been able to do in the past. But it's a great spot to be starting with also. Any other thoughts from Greg Munn and kind of the big picture about how we got here? Or also even, you know, the, the lottery revenue itself? Any thoughts on that at this time?
Yeah, thank you, Greg Munn, County Treasurer and CFO. So Commissioner DeBonne, I think you really nailed it. Probably just, I would echo those comments. We were very conservative last year. We did not know at the time what this pandemic was going to mean for the county and in general and specifically in video lottery funds. We cut our budget, our budget expectation for revenue back by almost 50%, pretty close to it from what we would have expected in a non-COVID year. And, and, and lived through it and have been positively surprised by events that have happened over the course of the year with some partial reopenings that have allowed those machines to be working and for folks to do that and us, and us to collect revenue. So Whitney and I have worked closely together on this to make sure we get you the best numbers we possibly can. And even to this morning, and she mentioned this earlier, that we've revised, we've looked again at the financials and revised our beginning fund balance based on what we think our revenue is going to be for this fiscal year and what the expenses we've committed to. And the net of those two essentially producing a revised beginning fund balance. So I think you can proceed with the rest of the meeting and, and Whitney's agenda there, unless you have any other questions for me.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Or any thoughts?
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to explore adding a couple of service partners. And also possibly one other economic development concept. That, I mean, something that we, we've talked about a bit already. But like just the idea that there are all sorts of really entrepreneurial, innovative agricultural producers here in the county. And there, I, I believe there might be ways to make investments, you know, possibly actually just even making investments in our own CDD staff to facilitate some of the things that they, that some of these farmers and ranchers are interested in doing. So that's that concept. And then in terms of additional service partners, I would, I would love to have us invite to kind of present or explore the idea of adding service partners to groups. The Dashoots Collaborative Forest Project and also the, the Dashoots Basin Water Collaborative. And I, I asked Wit- Whitney about sort of the, and Tom about sort of the categories or the designation criteria that we use for, for service partners. And I believe that both of those entities could fit under one of the three, one of the three designation criteria. In my mind, again, the, our forests, our rivers, our farms, you know, because the Dashoots Basin Water Collaborative is basically about, you know, making the river better and making agriculture better. But our forests, our rivers, our farms are one of the, are a huge economic driver for the, for the region. And so, you know, it looks like we're, we're starting the year in a pretty good place with lottery revenue. But I was going to suggest that a potential alternative to lottery revenue is to support those groups, those two groups. It might be transient room tax. Again, the concept that, you know, if the, the forests, the rivers, the farms are the reason that many people come here to Central Oregon, investing transient room tax dollars in, in those sectors, in those areas of our community is, is a way to kind of close the loop and reinvest, you know, reinvest tourism and recreation money back into the things that drive tourism and recreation.
Great.
My first pitch.
Yeah, how about we go through kind of the allocation as, as laid out here? And then, you know, talk about a, you know, a better-known remaining balance where we can start to talk about that also.
Sounds great.
Great. Okay, perfect. My plan is to kind of start at the top and work our way down section by section if that works for the board. So I'll go ahead and start with economic development. As you likely saw in your packet materials, Edco is requesting a relatively small increase to the funds that they received last year. It's a 2.2% increase over the funding that they received, which spans general operations as well as support for local capacity across the county. And Bend, Sun River, Lapine, Redmond, Sisters. And then it also includes funding for their Venture Catalyst Program. So last year, as Commissioner DeBonne noted in the introduction, Edco's request for funds was paid from TRT. And that's why in the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, you won't see allocations listed by category because those did not come from the video lottery fund. The increases that Edco is requesting this year are a $5,000 increase for the Venture Catalyst Program and a $1,000 increase for Edco regional support. And again, there's supporting materials within the requests that Edco put forward that kind of explains why they believe that those requests are needed at this time. So I'll go ahead and pause and let the board have some conversation about the requests coming from Edco.
So for every one of these items, there's the 2022 requests. And really, I think our decision as a board is, you know, are we rolling those over in to make the official allocation? Or change, or different numbers?
Can, can I ask about the, the loan component, component? So we, we don't, we don't add capital to that loan program every year? Or we have added capital most years, but just not last year?
That was started before I got here. But Tom will know some history on it. It was unanticipated tax revenue when, part of it was when the economy stopped in its tracks in 2007, 8, 9. I guess there was a lag from the tax revenue. But all of a sudden, bank foreclosures, banks paid off all back taxes. And there was this, right as the economy was stopped, there was a big number, knowing that we wanted to reinvest in it. So that was one of the revenue sources.
Interesting.
Yeah, Commissioner, we've basically done it on an as-needed basis. There's been years where we haven't had a loan and hadn't need to recapitalize. And there's been other years where they've been busy. And we've added money at a sort of an off-cycle timeframe. And the money's come from different places. Commissioner DeBonne's correct on the original seed money, but it's come from general fund. We may have put TRT money in there at different times. So it's basically as needed. We work with Edco pretty diligently to try and anticipate loans that are in the pipeline that are coming. So to ensure that we don't get in a position where we run out in the middle of a, you know, deal in the works, so to speak.
Right.
So that request that you see before you for recapitalization of that fund kind of factors in, we have a few loans that are repaying. And so the money that we'll see come in through those repayments and then kind of what Edco expects to see in terms of what they know is coming. So Roger had estimated recapitalization should be in the range of $90,000 to $110,000. And I went ahead for the purposes of this exercise and, and inserted that $110,000 as the request since it was the higher end.
And, and the other, let me just make sure I understand correctly. So the other, the other strand of the story here is that, you know, this is the loan program where if, if businesses meet certain performance metrics, they can be, their loan can be forgiven as well. Okay. So that, that would, that would point for a need for, you know, regular recapitalization of the fund.
Yeah, hopefully it's a one-way street and the money's just going out and jobs are created and there's a strong payroll and happy families. You know what I mean? That's the big picture.
Definitely. It's, I think, an excellent program. It, you know, family living wages, it's, you know, it's, it's outstanding. And, you know, they're carefully evaluated if they do qualify. And it seems like we've really heard some great stories the last couple of months about businesses that have actually been successful in this economy. So refunding that to $110,000, I think, makes perfect sense.
And I agree.
Because we didn't last year. Is that true? Yes.
I would support that.
Yeah, so as soon as we start to put direction to it, are you going to do a live spreadsheet roll here?
Would you like me to?
You don't have to. I'm just saying, we've seen that.
You can do, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
We want to see the technology work.
We'll put me in the hot seat here.
Yeah. So then the other line items for Edco Regional Capacity, Bend, Sun River, Lapine, Redmond, Sisters, and also the Venture Catalyst Program. At this point in time, I'm supportive of all of those. It's really wonderful to see such a great organization that, you know, has other revenue sources, a little bit diverse, the public-private partnership plus their event revenue and, you know, not asking for a lot over time. So.
I, I, I would be supportive of these amounts as well. I'm just, out of curiosity, I wanted to ask about the, when we look at the sort of community-level investments, are the, are the request levels to the county from Redmond and Bend lower because the cities are contributing a significant amount? Or do they just need less money to, to run those?
Oh, yeah, no, it's not less money.
I, I wouldn't.
Small town, big town. It's just the way it's evolved. And it, it's worked over the years.
Yeah, no, I, that, that makes a lot of sense to me.
I mean, Redmond's program was started in 1988. So they have an enormous track history, extremely successful. But, you know, it seems like the numbers fit what we're doing, what we have been doing, and it's working.
And now there's crazy Mike's Pizza.
Right, Mike's Pizza's coming to town, so.
So it sounds like support for all of those items.
Yes.
So stepping back to the Internal Services fee. So is that $13,000 relative to the revenue of the year? Is that the idea?
Yes, ISFs for this department are charged in support of a, of a variety of departments. And that's kind of, and so the ISF Finance helps us out with how to calculate that and to make sure it's in line so that gets updated every year as we prepare the budget.
Yeah, so that's just kind of the number that came out, the formula.
And I mean, so, could, would we think of that similarly to, you know, when there's a grant? You know, the, the organization that receives it might charge an indirect rate to, you know, basically administer the grant?
Right, the ISFs that are charged to video lottery tied to the departments, the assistant facilitating the fund. So the board, admin, finance, it's, I think that's a good analogy. Tom, I don't know if you want to jump in?
That's correct.
Yeah. I, I guess my one question about that is, is it enough?
Yeah, all our ISFs are formula-driven. So in the case of Finance as well as B O C C Admin, it's based on the, just simply the size of their budget primarily that drives a, creates a percentage that is then applied to the cost of the operation that's spread across essentially every county operation that has a budget, you know, on a prorated size of budget. You know, it's not, you know, is it, is it 100% precise, accurate? Probably not, but it's, it's understandable. And there's some rationale behind it in terms of how much each county operation gets charged.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, it, it takes a lot of work to, to manage money and get it to good, to, to good outlets. So I want to make sure we're covering our costs.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move into the second part of the Economic Development Request, which comes from the Sun River Chamber. So last year, similar to Edco, the board funded $40,000 for Sun River Chamber of Commerce out of TRT. And again, that's why you're not going to see that figure reflect in the blue column. This year, the Sun River Chamber has an increased request of $64,000. They're requesting that the board sustain their $40,000 of baseline support is how they're categorizing that funding. And they're requesting $24,000 in new funding for continuation of their bi-local campaign, which they launched using CRF dollars. And so they are, in the memo that's in the board's packet, they indicated that they feel that campaign has been successful and they'd like to continue it into the coming years. So this is a request for $64,000, which, as you see, is being placed back into a video lottery ask as opposed to TRT where it was last year.
And I had the pleasure of going store to store with the Chamber about a month and a half ago, talking to the local community, what they're doing, what they're doing to survive. It was, it's an amazing program. They really feel like it's something worthwhile to keep going forward for the community. And when you consider all that Sun River does to contribute to Dashoots County, I, I think it's really an important fund for us to keep allowing them to support local in their campaign.
Great. I, I, I wanted to ask the question, you know, looking at this, I, I was curious why, you know, what the history is of why we provide, provide support to the Sun River Chamber and not others?
Sun River is unincorporated. So they don't have a tax base to fund them, whereas Sisters gets funding from the city of Sisters. But they don't. And pre-COVID, Sun River actually was responsible for over 50% of the TRT revenue for the county. So I just felt like, you know, they're really not getting their economic justification because there's no city there. And all that we can do to help them, I think, is really important.
Yeah.
They've, you know, they've definitely, they had very carefully, where they were very responsible over COVID. They've, you know, they've got their Sun River masks that they've done. I mean, they've really done a lot of really positive things. They did have one vaccination event down there. But they, you know, they, their group has clearly been stepping up in order to meet their community business needs.
Yeah.
Make sure people are still open, you know, in another six months.
So I've got a little bit of history. I've been a Sun River Chamber member as a small business owner previous to being Commissioner. My wife has always been involved. I've generally been an advocate for the Sun River Chamber of Commerce to be a business support organization, proud of their advocacy to, for businesses and not as much responsibility for Dashoots County to take transient room tax from activities that happen around the Chamber and give them to the Chamber. So I've been less enthusiastic to think that it's our responsibility to pay for Chamber operations. But I'm not opposed to supporting them in the past. I've always said that, you know, your ask is reasonable, let's proceed. I'm less enthusiastic to add, you know, this $24,000. But the 40 seems to be appropriate. So as I say, I've, I've always been kind of down the middle of the line there thinking, I would much rather see this Chamber of Commerce be a strong membership organization with enthusiastic members paying for their membership and getting a service, you know, independent of the county. So I always let the board members know that, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I might fall somewhere right in the middle. Because I, I, I had a chance to visit with the Sun River Chamber a month, six weeks ago, something like that. And we talked about all sorts of really neat things that the county could be doing to support the, support the Sun River community. And, you know, in, in so doing, you know, really supporting the Chamber. Things like, they, they were very interested in talking about the broadband, you know, fiber-to-the-home expansion that they're interested in doing. And, you know, if you, if you want to, if you want to generate more, more business for Sun River businesses, I can't imagine something that, that, that would be more conducive to that than investing in broadband. Because when, you know, suddenly 500 more people decide to be permanent residents of Sun River than, you know, occasional visitors, it's going to, it'll mean a lot more traffic to the, to the grocery store, to the restaurants, to, you know, rental services and all sorts of things there. So I, we talked about broadband. They discussed, they, they mentioned that the, the only place that they have a county road, you know, concern or challenge is, you know, right by, you know, right, basically right by the business park, right? You know, the library, the, the post office, that, that, that intersection. They, they described as, you know, You know, the library, the post office, that intersection, they described as, you know, during the summertime being really maxed out. And so I mentioned that to Chris and Cody at Rhodes, and just asked, you know, is there a way to consider this to be part of our TSP? Yeah, we're talking, we're talking with folks right now about recycling. That's not as immediately important to the BEN Chamber, but the Sun River community, about recycling and supporting, you know, between the county and Cascade, supporting, you know, a improved recycling system in Sun River. So I guess I'm very interested in providing support for the Sun River community and Sun River businesses, but like, I don't necessarily think that it has to come through this Chamber request, so I would be supportive of the base 40,000 and maybe, you know, a bit of, a portion of the BI local campaign that they're trying to do, but maybe not the whole thing.
Okay, well, think about it, 50% of the room tax revenue is coming from Sun River. Do we want a lot of empty businesses down there? How is that going to look to the international people that come to Sun River because of their amazing reputation? I mean, they really, I do believe that they are at the top. Comes from personal experience and hearing about people that, you know, they come once and they come back and they come back, but what if, I really feel like what the Chamber took on as responsibility, they did an excellent job. Dan is the new president for the group, and they clearly have identified what they need to do, and to keep that a vibrant community for those people that are going to be visiting, and don't forget that probably we're going to have a really busy summer again, and I just feel like the businesses there do need, they do need that bit of support. So I, you know, I don't have a problem with the extra 24,000. I met their, they're actually working on their social media, they'd never had somebody doing that before as well, and this woman, I believe her name was Christine Thomas, was excellent. She really, she's out there every day doing something that the Chamber totally appreciates.
Yeah, it's just in that spot. So, you know, you mentioned some items that they're advocating for, and...
And the bus, the bus is another one, you know, the employee shuttle bus from Lapine. I mean, that's, so we're, I do feel like we're trying to do, you know, the county is trying to do a lot of things to be supportive of Sun River businesses.
Yep.
Just not sure if this is, if this is, if this one is our job as well.
Yeah, as I say, so then it, as, I would much rather see a strong, independent Chamber of Commerce. As I say, I've had the hat on, as a business owner on the other side of this, being able to tell us, yes, we need more support for broadband, yes, we need these transportation improvements, but this request is for us to pay for the Chamber of Commerce to tell us the stuff that they need, you know, it's like we're paying on both sides of this transaction.
Yeah, yeah.
But as I say, I mean, I just want to acknowledge that. I mean, I'm not so enthusiastic about paying for Chamber of Commerce activities. But so there's support for the baseline of $40,000, both of us, everybody?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then, so it was mentioned BI local campaign, there's a request for $24,000. It was mentioned, yeah, maybe half of that, and I mean, I'd support that, too, if you want to go with that at this time. It's just, as I say, it's, yeah.
I like, I could support that.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, let's do that at this time, because, I mean, I do support that. And thank you for the enthusiasm for that, Commissioner Derr.
Yeah, I mean, when I got the number from Greg Mann, I said, okay, how much does Sun River really contribute? And when you know that it's over 50%, I just think...
Well, but so Sun River is a term, Sun River. Sun River, there's a resort, there's an area, there's an unincorporated community, there's a lot of houses, housing around there, there's the business park. So as I say, I mean, I don't feel like guilty about Sun River area making transient room tax.
Well, I just know how hard it is right now to collect dues from businesses that are, okay, closed, open, closed.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
Spending thousands of dollars, closed, and $2,500 is a drop in the bucket from what people have spent to stabilize the Sun River breweries there, they've expanded outside. I mean, it hasn't been an easy year, and so I'm really happy that they actually put this all together, had their team look at it, and I'm very proud of them, so.
Okay.
And I definitely, I definitely think when we get to the American Rescue Plan funds, we should, we should think, we should explore all of our options to directly support businesses who have struggled through the pandemic and have been impacted.
That's exactly what came to my mind. There are some opportunities to support here coming up. Good.
Great.
Next item?
I'll go ahead and transition into project support, which is the next category that you'll see on your spreadsheet. This year, we'll go ahead and start with Shop With A Cop. This has been a program that the board has supported for a long time. The sheriff's office is requesting the same amount that they received last year, $3,000, to support this program.
I support that.
So could we, can we raise that?
I'm sure they would not turn you away if you did that.
I mean, come on, it's for kids. Who has been so short-changed this last year? Kids that haven't been in school, and, you know, what if we gave them $5,000, would they be shocked?
I think they would really appreciate that support, is my guess.
Well, it's, you know, how do we get, how do we get the message out to kids that, yeah, life is going to be okay, it's going to get back, it's going to, you're going to get back at school, it's going to get back to normal, so. And for the public relationship with Shop With A Cop, anyway, I'd suggest five.
Are you supportive of that, Commissioner?
The other one I'm looking at that's sort of connected, you know, like in my mind, connected is FAN, you know, basically trying to get, trying to get kids stuff that they need to, you know, go to school and be functional. And I see that FAN has asked for a small increase this year, so I guess I would support this increase, you know, on the, with the assumption that, you know, if we're really interested in making sure that kids get what they need to be able to, to function in life, that, you know, we'll also look favorably on that increase. And I mean, I would even consider plusing that up as well.
Well, what do you know, I've got one that I want to add something to also. Jbar J is the one that jumped out at me, so there was a $15,000 ask, and exactly my thought is adding $5,000 to it.
So the Jbar J, I've not heard a word about the major hunter jumper show that normally was done out on the grass. Normally, I talked to Stephanie, I know last year we kept going back and forth, can we do it, can we not? I haven't seen anything about that.
I haven't either.
Has that been dropped? You haven't seen anything either? I know, I thought I better give Stephanie a call. I'm thinking maybe that she just isn't, it isn't going to happen. I mean, it's such an amazing tradition for the West Coast to have jumping on grass.
And I've seen some of the rigs up and down the highways, you know, you can tell when it's the big semi truck and the super horse rig with the hay on top and everything, but obviously not for here right now, but I've seen them up and down the highway recently.
Right, I know, they are, you know, things are happening, but, yeah, I hadn't talked to her, so I wrote myself a note to give her a call and find out, because I know that was, that was a huge fundraiser for the group, and then the tradition of it, I hate to lose it. I'm happy with increasing the FAN as long as we're jumping around. It asked for 50,000.
Competition is on. Well, how about we go down, line item for Whitney's support?
Commissioner Derr, Jbar J's website said they were not able to hold the event in 2020, but are hopeful that 2021 will bring their largest fundraiser back July 21st through the 25th and July 28th through August 1st, so that gives you a little...
Okay, so they're, so they're talking about it then?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I'll talk to Stephanie.
So there's support for $5,000 for Shop With A Cop? I support that, yes, okay.
Just think how surprised they'll be.
Yes, and moving down, so historically, in this next line, we've provided video lottery support for our local match requirements for some of our transit funding. Beginning this year, that local match will be funded out of our STIF revenue, so that there is not a need or request for this local match for our 5310 transit services.
So that was a 90% match?
90/10, yep.
So we've come up with $5,000, it would be 50,000 or whatever the number...
Correct, we match funds with the city of Lapine.
Yep, yeah, and it just needed a home, so that's how it ended up in this spreadsheet.
Yes. The next project that we have in this project support category is the fuels reduction grant program that Ed Keith has been running the past two years. So the initial year that this program started, the board funded, Ed gave Ed $40,000 to launch this grant program, and he had over $120,000 in requests for funding, so just a really strong showing of support from the community to do this fuels reduction work. Last year, with the conservative budgeting of not knowing what COVID's impacts would be, the board funded the program with $20,000, which you'll see reflected on the spreadsheet. And this year, kind of preliminarily, for discussion by the board, we've increased a potential amount that could be allocated for this program, but that's definitely at your discretion and for discussion among the board if we would like to increase funding for this program. I think in talking with Ed, it sounds like they believe that there's folks in the community that would apply for grants up to that amount, and so we wanted to put this request forward for consideration.
I think it's an excellent idea, you know, Capital Press had the article on the front page that Central Oregon better clean up, so. If we can, if we actually have the funding then, Whitney, the 100,000, I know our beginning balance jumped up 180,000, so there's money right there that we didn't know when you did the original allocation, but I do believe that helping people clean up is great.
And I've heard more and more community discussion, so Project Wildfire, people know that there's money somewhere, you know, they don't know that this is the line item sometimes, but I've heard people refer to it, as in, oh, if we get our act together, we can apply for chipping dollars or support dollars. So I think it's resonating in the community, so I'm supportive of 100 at this time.
Yeah, my one concern would be about ramping up too fast, you know, so if you can, if you can get, you know, if that first cycle, we got 120,000 of requests, but, you know, like how, what were the, what were the tip-top, you know, like what were the best, you know, most solid projects? And if, you know, at the, at the other end of the spectrum, there were projects that weren't quite ripe yet? But I guess, you know, we depend on Ed, sorry, I'm thinking out loud, we depend on Ed to evaluate how much, how much solid, you know, quality project demand there is out in the community, and so if Ed thinks that we can put 100,000 on the ground effectively, I guess I would want to support that, and...
And I think it would likely, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Even if there's a project that's just not quite ripe or ready, I mean, if all the money isn't spent, that's fine, too, you know, this is a line item for a budget for the offer.
Yeah, what, these funds, if we disperse them, and I'm not sure, do we disperse them, or do, are they, do people request reimbursement for, after they've made expenditures?
The different, we have different agreements with different types of recipients of video lottery, so in most cases, like the service partner section, we execute an agreement with the agency, the agreement outlines criteria that they need to meet in terms of, they do quarterly reporting, we have review, and they, so they'll submit a report, we review the report, and we execute payment. For the grant program, typically, because that's more internal, so specific to this project, it would likely be a transfer to Ed, but I think you might, and I'll let Tom weigh in, too, similar to the discretionary grant process, we allocate money to discretionary grants, but then the board reviews applications as they come in, and if there weren't requests that, you know, met the funding that we had held for that program, I think we would just roll the funds forward, we wouldn't simply just execute because they were there, but I'll go ahead and, it looks like Tom wanted to...
Yeah, no, Commissioners, I think Whitney's spot on. What I was going to suggest is that if you were to allocate $100,000 to this program, or whatever amount you're comfortable with, that we could invite Ed back to talk to you specifically about the parameters of how it would work, where it goes geographically, how the individual grants might work and so forth, so you can just sort of earmark it today, and then have a more robust discussion about the specifics of the program at a later time.
That sounds great. I mean, I guess the one other thing that you might want to have thought about this is, there's, you know, watching the world of fuels reduction, we do, we want to encourage private landowners to take as much responsibility as we can encourage them to take for their property, and I think incentives are good to a certain point, and then at a certain point, it becomes, you know, the financial incentives almost become a, like a demotivator. It's like, oh, yeah, somebody will take care of it for me, like, I don't have to, I don't have to think about this. So I don't know exactly where that balance is between, like, we add a little bit of money and it kind of, it kind of gives people more momentum, and when you give them too much money, it decreases their drive and ambition, but that's, that's something that we can ask Ed about when we, he comes in and tells us about how he wants to run this grant program.
And I think you're exactly right, just FYI, I think most of the programs in my neighborhood is part of the program. For example, it's a sweat equity-based program where the property owner has to pony up money, and then the neighborhood association essentially either matches it or has their own portion of that contribution for the work to be done. So it's not a free ride for anybody in most cases, my understanding, there's a partnership in how that work gets done.
Maybe we've got the formula right already.
And I think the goal is FIREWISE, which is a national program which requires annual review and investment, and sweat equity is part of it, so it's an ongoing program. I think of these dollars as, those dollars to take us a pile of small diameter logs and chip them, you know, so that's something a homeowner may not be able to, capability to do, but get those pile organized and ready on a date. In fact, we're doing that in our neighborhood. We were going to do it last year, COVID came, we were going to have a community meeting in the spring and work on this, but Boone Zimmermanly has scheduled a date, like in the first week of June or something, for a neighborhood around where I live, for the chipper to come through, so that's exactly it. So it's, it's money being spent, but it's not, I'm going to sit at home and watch somebody do work for me.
Right, Commissioner DeBonier, and I'm just reflecting, I'm looking back at Ed's materials, the communities that apply for funding under the program, at least historically, they're ranked, and the consideration includes FIREWISE status, the amount of work being done by the community, like how the community would involve its own residents, match funding, so those are all elements that go into the scoring for the program.
Yeah, great.
Sounds good.
So I'm supportive.
But the fact that we have 40-some groups that are FIREWISE, so, I mean, that is, it's really important, and I will remind everyone to please see the documentary Paradise if you haven't seen it, and then you'll want to be part of cleaning up, so.
Okay, so, yeah, there's support for $100,000 in that line item.
Okay, so that is all of the project support items that we had for your consideration, and I'll go ahead and move into service partner, discussion on service partner requests, if that sounds good? Okay, perfect. So service partner requests, the first service partner is Council on Aging, and this support goes to Fund Point 7 FTE that provides, supports Council on Aging's nutrition programs, which is like Meals on Wheels and Grab and Go lunches. The funds, Council on Aging is requesting $40,000 for fiscal year '22, which is not an increase from the funding they received last year.
Yeah, they're doing some great work right now, obviously. Let's keep that amount there. They are not shy in sending a discretionary grant application mid-year, and we've seen that a few times.
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And if I'm remembering correctly, the most recent discretionary grant cycle was, they made a request for heaters, and we didn't fully fund that request, but we, there was some contribution.
Yeah.
But we've done lots of contributions.
Yeah. And so my goal would be to get over there again, you know, to the physical facility, say hi to folks, understand what they're doing next, so, and we'll make sure to have those relationships.
Great. Next, we have Mountain Star Family Relief Nursery. And this, they are requesting 18,000, which is not, it's the same amount that they received in fiscal year '21. Mountain Star, this funding supports part of an FTE that's an interventionist that supports relief nursery, therapeutic, early childhood services.
I think that should be a nice round 20,000.
I am, that was exactly what I was thinking.
There we go. So, and as I say, a couple of these, I have a hunch that we might hear from them throughout the year, which is okay. You know, this is putting service partners, long-term partners, groups doing work that augment the services of the county. So, yeah, if we hear from them later in the year, that's going to be okay.
Perfect. JbarJ, which Commissioner DeBonier mentioned earlier, JbarJ is requesting 15,000, which is consistent with the funding they received in fiscal year '21. This is support for a portion of an FTE that's a case manager that supports runaway and homeless youth emergent, the homeless youth emergency shelter. And these are used as matching funds.
So, this is the one that I just put a plus next to as I was reviewing everything. So, you know, I would propose 20,000 as a bump.
And I would match, I would definitely agree with that.
Okay.
I can support that.
Right.
Next up, we have the Redmond Senior Center Meals on Wheels and Congregate Meals Project. They're requesting 9,000, which is an increase of 4,000. Funding for this program helps support Meals on Wheels and Home Food Delivery Service for older adults. The increased funding request would increase the number of clients who receive daily meals, pay for rising food costs, and cover increased administrative time that's needed to develop channels of communication to reach homebound adults.
I think they're, this Meals on Wheels program is independent of Central Oregon Council on Aging. Is that correct? I mean?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm, I'm supportive of that.
Mine, their ask seems appropriate, the 9,000.
Yeah. Redmond, you know, Redmond, as we, as we know, Redmond is one of our fastest-growing communities. And the senior slice of that population is, is growing at, you know, at least as fast as the, as Redmond's, you know, overall growth rate, and, you know, possibly faster. So.
As I say, every one of these, well, and this is a time of transition. You know, COVID, last year, we were very conservative. Right now, we're putting numbers down on the page. But I mean, if these, if there's needs out there during this next year, we're definitely going to have the conversations.
Next on the board's list of service partner organization is the Kids Center. This is a request for 30,000, which matches what they received in fiscal year '21. This funding supports Point 15 FTE of a medical examiner that conducts consultations and evaluations of suspected victims of child abuse.
Now, let's, let's go with that amount for now. They had a fundraiser lunch yesterday, and I know they were, I think aiming for 150,000 in support. I know they were, they were at 100 at lunch yesterday. So, we'll see what they can do in the community.
Great. And the Latino Community Association is our next service partner. They are requesting a 10,000 increase with a total request of 30,000 for fiscal year '22. This funding is used to support the Healthy Families and Family Empowerment Programs, and they are requesting an increase due to growing demand for their services.
I'm supportive.
I think it's appropriate. I know Brad's on the Health Council with me. And this seems like an ask that we should be able to.
Support.
There you go.
Thank you. Bethlehem Inn is also requesting a 10,000 increase in funding this year. They received 30,000 in fiscal year '21, and they're requesting 40,000 for fiscal year '22. This funding supports a portion of their kitchen manager and kitchen steward that prepare and serve meals as part of their meal program. As you likely saw in the materials they submitted for today's meeting, their requested increase will support meal planning in both Bend and Redmond. The Inn is working to open a second location in Redmond later this spring, so the increased funding would help to support that effort.
I'm supportive.
I am supportive as well. Do, one question, do we have any sense of, there is the Turnkey Project? Is that the?
Right, the Turnkey Project.
They were, they were competing for, for funds for another shelter in Redmond. Do we have any sense of where that is at this point?
I think it's, it's happening.
So, they were, they were successful?
Right. And there is, there is supposed to be funding to help with running those programs through the state. So, you know, I can understand that we need to step it up, but there are supposed to be state funding dollars available. So, hopefully, it won't be a shortage.
Possibly. A quiet period means there's a transaction being discussed, too.
Right. Yeah. So, I mean, that, if they're taking on another, another facility, I mean, to me, that just points to, to the need, you know, it's, it's an additional argument in support of increasing their, their approving this, this increase request.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next, we have the Family Access Network, FAN. They are requesting a 5,000 increase, total request for fiscal year '22 of 15,000. The funding that we give to FAN as part of the service partner program supports a portion of a FAN advocate at Juniper Elementary School. And they've tied the requested increase of funds for this year. The need is to meet increased demand that's kind, that's related to COVID and kind of the impacts that families in the region are facing. They also highlighted the opening of Caldera High School, which will require them to add a FAN advocate and serve additional families with the opening of that new school.
I think we already talked about having the 15,000, their ask, their increased ask funded.
Did you want to advocate for more than?
I would, I would even advocate for a little bit more. I mean, the addition of a whole nother high school, trying to provide, you know, services for kids in need. You know, I'd like to ask for a 5,000 increase, but I, you know, I think beyond this even. But, you know, I would love to at least ask for a 2,500 increase.
Well, let's do that, because they have a requested increase, and then 2,500 on top of that. So, it's 1750 this year. And if things are going, it may be rounded up in the future to some other number.
It's really interesting, though, you know, we're talking about adding this funding. I've driven by that brand-new school several times. That school is so fabulous-looking. I'm like, oh, my gosh. Yes. Somebody has spent a lot of money on building that school because the sports fields and everything are all like there and ready to go. I mean, how many millions did this, this district spend on that school? Does anybody have it?
Well, I know it was all bond-funded, so everybody who lives in the district is paying for it.
Right.
Oh, it was, I don't, I don't recall. It was 30, somewhere in that, 20, 30 million?
That, that was my recollection.
Yeah.
I, I'm not.
Anyway, I, I have driven by it quite a bit lately, and I'm going, wow. You know, it's just like I was at Redmond High last weekend, and you could see where, the school was nice. I mean, it has a nice track and everything, but driving by Caldera, it's definitely at a different level.
Yeah. No, I, these are, these are wonderful schools. You know, this will be a wonderful new school, and, and FAN can make sure that every student that attends there really has the opportunity to, to make full use of it and appreciate it. So.
Well, I think kids getting back into the classroom actually probably do appreciate getting back in the classroom. So, from what I've heard.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just talking about, you know, a kid who, a kid who doesn't need to worry about getting shoes to be able to go to high school is, is, is going to be able to appreciate it even more.
Okay, perfect. So, I will keep that at 175. The next service partner on the list is Saving Grace. They are requesting 20,000, which is consistent with the funding they received in fiscal year '21. These funds fund a portion of an FTE that supervises staff who facilitate supervised visits and safe exchanges for families.
It definitely is a very needed space in our county. When you look at the chart and you realize how many people that are on parole are because of domestic violence, and, you know, just knowing how safe that space is, I, I, I know I felt a lot better once I toured and understand, you know, the different entrances and everything. So, you know, I'm really happy to spend the 20,000.
I'm supportive of that also.
I'm also supportive.
Thank you. Next up, we have Central Oregon Veterans Outreach COVO requesting 30,000, which is what they received in fiscal year '21. This funding goes to fund a portion of the FTE for their outreach manager.
So, I have a hunch that, yeah, we're sending another 100,000 their way in a, in a long-term commitment. So, this will be augmenting those same positions, but also integrating the Veterans Village into these services. So.
And I was really proud of them because last year, they actually applied for the dog grant, and because of all the veterans having their pets. And I believe they, they were awarded 2,700 because they made that application in. And I thought, I hope they can do that again this year.
Yep.
Just to remind them.
They neuter funds through that application. So, it's a great thing to point out.
So, it might be nice to consolidate the investments in COVO somehow. I don't know that it would all go to this spreadsheet or another place. But, yeah, just to, and just so we see, we see it all, you know, how we're investing in the, the services. But I'm supportive of 30 for now in this item.
I am supportive as well.
Thank you. Next, we have CASA, that is also requesting 30,000, consistent with the funding they received in fiscal year '21. This funding helps support a portion of an FTE program staff that train and support volunteers, CASA volunteers. Okay.
I do wonder, you know, since, I, I know, I know our courts and, and our prosecutors and everyone have been trying to sort of, there's just a big backlog of, there's a back, there's a backlog of, of court proceedings. I'm not sure whether the backlog of court proceedings is, are, are the cases where CASA advocates would be involved or not. But if this is going to, if suddenly after, after, after COVID actually lets up, and we, you know, we're allowed to kind of catch up whether the, the demand on their services is going to, is going to go through the roof or not. Did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to remind the board that you've committed funds to help with domestic violence cases with the circuit court. And the timing of that is in the May timeframe. So, you, you are committing funds to help address the backlog that the circuit court very well knows exists in the coming months, just for context.
So, I think this falls in that category of, you know, if there's some critical needs in the next six months or years, let's have a conversation.
And the, the other group that's not on here that I find particularly close to my heart and very effective is Friends of the Children. They select the kids that really look like they don't have a chance of making it. And it's, it's very expensive, but it's, their success rate is unbelievable because they'll spend like from kindergarten to 12th grade with them, give them continuity. And I know that I, they're not on our list, but I really think their program is worthy of sooner than later being added. You know, we're, if you want to change something, you're going to really have to dig deep. And I think their program really does do that.
So, there's a, there's another potential new service partner.
Right.
And we could, depending on how the board wants to have the conversation, but schedule organizations to come in and give presentations as you kind of evaluate that. But I can definitely put them on the list in addition to the other two.
That would be great. I would really appreciate it.
Commissioner Chang, just to quickly, kind of, this doesn't directly answer your question about CASA, but Sarah Hudson put together kind of a COVID impact summary as it relates to service partner funding. And they did note that they're experiencing an increase in the number of children entering foster care, kind of as a related COVID impact. So, in terms of what they're seeing, slight uptick in that area.
30,000 for now.
Okay. Yeah. And, and, you know, kind of an open door.
Yeah.
To talk about special needs as we, as we understand what's happening at the court level over the next year.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Healthy Beginnings. Healthy Beginnings is requesting 20,000, which is the, the same amount that they received in fiscal year '21. This funding supports a portion of the FTE needed to coordinate the minimum of one preschool screening each month.
Have they been able to have screenings at all in the last year?
At the beginning of the year, they were impacted. And then, I believe they kind of got back up and were able to, to make things work. I can double-check that in the, yeah, setbacks in Q1, but they've ramped up efforts to meet outcomes and are currently exceeding the number of screenings delivered. So, it sounds like they found a way to make that work safely in the COVID environment.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, the, the small kids are, you know, have been back in school. Yeah, but just the, the general, the general attitude that kids on, you know, very small children are less likely to get spread and suffer from COVID. I would, I think that that's playing out in, at the preschool, in the preschool population, and, and childcare, and, you know, kids getting back to school more at that level than they have at the older ages.
So, yeah, 20 is good for now.
Right, 20.
Okay. And our final service partner, Upper Deschutes Watershed Council, is requesting 20,000, which is the amount that they received in fiscal year '21. This funding is used for restoration projects, their monitoring program, and supports general operations and to, helps them accomplish education and outreach programs about the importance of watershed health and restoration.
And they always make a good case that these are very important because these are matched dollars, and these really empower them to proceed with some big projects with, which bring in other, a lot of other big dollars. So, that, the case has been made here, yeah?
And I think they have a couple of programs this summer that look outstanding for the kids. So, I think that's very important.
And that's, and those are the, those, that's the component of their programming that's, that's hardest to fund for them, the, the, the education and, you know, child enrichment programs that, that they offer. So, I, I'm supportive of 20K.
So, right now, might be a good time to, you know, switch gears into other, possibly other line items, or at least a structure about how we might add other line items, you know, however we want to proceed.
Yeah.
Commissioner, you mentioned Forest Collaborative, Water Partnership, and Agriculture.
Yeah. So, I, the, the, those first two, the, the Deschutes Collaborative, I, so I, I asked Tom and Whitney to sort of unpack for me a little bit how the designation criteria work. And there's, there are these three criteria. You know, mandated county activity or sole source provider being the first, county involvement being a criteria on the, on the second, and, you know, county impact being the third. And I, I, I believe that the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project could, could meet the criteria of, for county involvement. Because, you know, Commissioner Allen Unger was, was instrumental in getting this group started. And he, both he and Ed Keith have played a key role in making the group run over the last 11 years. And, you know, what a, what a return on investment. We, you know, we re-secured, re-secured 10.1 million of supplemental award, you know, competitive award funding to, to get 120,000 acres of the Deschutes National Forest treated, you know, in, in the, the key zone around Sisters, Bend, and Sun River. So, I, I know that the Deschutes Collaborative, they constantly struggle to, you know, with kind of basic coordination funding. And also, there was a, there was a key couple of years where the Oregon Forest Resource Institute was actually investing in their outreach programs. Essentially, you know, Essentially, you know, you know, they're the, you know, they're the, they're the group that is doing so much to, you know, help community members understand that when you see somebody cutting down trees in the forest, it's, it's actually okay, actually. Not, not just okay, it might actually be a really positive thing. They're the, they're the ones who are trying to make sure that, that people understand that you need to accept a little bit of prescribed fire smoke in the spring and the fall so that, you know, we don't have catastrophic fire smoke in the middle of summer, you know, right next to our, our communities. So that would be, you know, my, my pitch for, for that group. And I really do think that having a foundational investment, something in the range, you know, like the, the Watershed Council, something in the range of $20,000, would really help them, you know, it just, it, it takes a tremendous amount of energy and attention to make sure that your group is, is funded and, you know, can do its job. So if they were, i- if we could alleviate a little bit of that stress, they could do more to, you know, more collaborative agreement building, more communications work.
Well, I'd, I'd like to understand the business case for what, you know, so there's a collaborative forest group, and I've been, you know, at the tours and at some meetings, and I've met everybody involved, I haven't done a whole lot with it. But federal government said, hey, let's put a collaborative to get, my understanding is, the federal government said, let's put a collaborative together, let's get the, you know, multiple parties at the table, let's see if we can find a common prescription for forest management in these areas, which would qualify for this investment, like you mentioned, which got us to where we are today. We celebrated a very positive collaborative that has come to common ground to allow projects to proceed, very exciting. What is the future? I mean, you know, so if we, if we fund a group that sits down and said, we're gonna be collaborative, for what? Yeah.
Two things. Number one, the Forest Service didn't organize this. The Forest Service, you know, the, the Congress passed the Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Act and basically invited communities to compete. So, and, and our community, already doing a lot of really great project-level forest collaboration, said, you know, we're ready to do that, and, and, you know, was one of 10 communities across the nation who, who received one of these awards. And similarly, looking forward, this group, the, the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project, as, as Holly, the forest supervisor, described to us the other day, is ranked to number one for continuation grants for that Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Act. So that'd be, I believe it's a three-year, $5 million additional project, and, and that would accomplish a lot of the non-commercial work that's needed to basically finish up, you know, the, the 250,000 acres surrounding Bend, Sisters, and, and Sun River.
So I, I.
So they, to be able to.
The federal government's gonna give it to the Deschutes National Forest to implement a program that people aren't gonna sue each other about? You know, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the path of what's going on.
Yeah, more like, again, to, to, to do fuels reduction work, prescribed burns, thinning, you know, even brush mowing, to do that work next to substantial population centers, it really does take a lot of community outreach to, I mean, just, you know, every, you know, every mountain biker that they talk to, to say like, hey, when you go out in the forest, you see the paint on the trees, it's actually a good thing. Here's kind of where the forest is going, so don't, don't obsess about, you know, how the, you know, how the, the forest that you're used to, which is really screwed up, is changing. Think about what it's going to look like in the future. To, to kind of put that vision in everyone's mind in the community and reduce resistance, that's the job.
Yeah, so I'm, and I'm trying to understand what, if we, if we do one-time funding or call them a service partner and say we're gonna commit to $20,000 with the expectation that it's gonna be on the list for futures to come.
Yeah.
I don't have a feel for what, you know, I'm just trying to understand more. You know, is there a, a piece of paper that says, we, we want to get this done in the next couple of years, so then we can look at, back at it three years from now and say, oh, that's why we gave them $20,000?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you, I think you could look at the, at the, at the extend, the extension proposal to kind of get a, get a sense of the, on the ground, what's gonna get done.
And then is it for the next five years or for the?
That one, that's, that one is a three-year.
But I mean, like, you know, you know, you're proposing to add.
Right.
In this spreadsheet, is it gonna be kind of for the rest of time or three to four years?
These forest collaboratives, they, they can run out of steam.
Yeah, so.
And, you know, so I, I, I think that there would be, you know, we could revisit this at, at, you know, regular increments of time. And I, again, I also think that if we don't think that this is an appropriate request for lottery dollars, I really do think that making the immediate connection back to, you know, people come here to Deschutes County to play in the forest, and they don't want to play in a forest that, you know, they don't want to play in a, in, in a black charred, you know, you know, dead snag forest, they want to play in a, in a live, healthy, resilient forest. And, and so the, the contribution of this group to doing, you know, to ensuring that that tourist attraction is, is there, I, I think is worth investing in, and is, and I, you know, I see a logical connection back to the TRT revenue.
If we're, so who does, who gets $20,000? Who gets the amount?
Right.
Who do we write a check to? See, I'm just thinking.
So the, the, the fiscal agent for the Deschutes Collaborative is the Central Oregon Forest Stewardship Foundation, it's called. And from there, that, you know, basically, it's a, it was a structure that was created because, you know, COIC was coordinating the, the Forest Collaborative, and as a, as a intergovernmental, intergovernmental council organized under ORS 190, there was all sorts of funding sources that COIC was not eligible for. So they created, they built this 501(c)(3) structure to, you know, to be able to, to capture private philanthropic contributions. And so that's the structure that I would, I would assume that the, the check would be cut to. We could, you know, you could also set it up in a way that, I mean, we could give, we could put this like under Ed's stewardship, and, you know, he could cut checks directly for certain kinds of services from the $20,000 that, that, that we, we allocate. That would be another, that would be another way to structure it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I think, you know, these are all good questions, and we could, we could, I mean, if there's an openness to considering this, we could just invite them to, you know, like a, the coordinator and, you know, a couple of members of the steering committee to come and, and give a presentation to us.
I would prefer a presentation. I'd like to see their tax return, like, understand their financial structure if we're talking. They're doing federal projects, so, you know, where do we fit in with federal projects? When we have, we have, you know, we have a huge responsibility because, you know, our problem is not going away, but where's our money gonna be best spent? So, yeah, I would like to hear from them personally.
So, yeah, that's good information. I, if there's something to invest in, let's invest in it. You know, I, I guess, yeah, I do want to know more. I want to learn a lot more because, you know, it, what kind of line items would come out of this $20,000, you know? And I saw, you know, when, when there was, you know, just the little cardboard, you know, beer, beer things at, at the breweries a couple summers ago or whatever it was, it mattered, you know? We love our forests. There was some great messaging coming out of the, the collaborative. So that's one expense, I think, of, just like you mentioned, the Forest Resource Institute was helping with the messaging also. There was radio and community spots, website efforts. Or is it, you know, buying pizza when we have a meeting, or is it paying a contractor to do something in the ground? You know, I'm just, there's a whole array of things the money could go for, I don't know.
No, I mean, on-the-ground treatments, $20,000 isn't gonna buy you. You know, we, we, you know, when, when Ed explained those state E-Board investments in our properties, you know, a few weeks ago, he's $900 an acre, $20,000 isn't gonna buy you. It'll buy you a tiny impact if you had put it into on-the-ground treatments, but if you put it into building and maintaining community support and reducing conflict around forest management, the, the payoffs are, in my opinion, pretty, pretty substantial and pretty profound. And, and again, that we could invite the, a couple of members of the steering committee and the, the staffing for the collaborative to, to come and talk with us.
Well, so then, it becomes the industry of advocating, which means we're paying somebody to tell us how much we love our forests. And I don't want to take anything away from somebody, but are we just buying somebody's job so they can be a cheerleader for this great work? And maybe we need to do that. I, I'm just thinking through the things that, you know, what does it sound like there, you know?
I mean, we, we, we pay Ed, we pay, pay Edco to, to cheerlead Central Oregon to the rest of the, the rest of the world. We put, we pay, you know, visit Central Oregon and visit Bend to bring people here. I mean, it, you know, it's a marketing or, or social marketing, in this case, I call it social marketing activity, is, is, is a legitimate investment, depending on what your goals are, and depending on, you know, the effectiveness of the efforts.
Well, and then, you know, I'm thinking, under service partners, as you were mentioning these things, there's social services, you know, stabilizing somebody's world tangibly, and I'm referring to this list here, and so, under service partners, emergency, food, clothing, and shelter, stabilization and development of people, right? And now, and so now we're talking about maybe a different group of investments in our community around us in the natural resource world that, to make it, to main, you know, to manage it for the long term, or whatever. I, you know, I'm just thinking, what, what is the category of things we're talking about?
I mean, the fact that we have the Watershed Council here already, the Upper Deschutes Watershed Council, and, you know, I, I, I really think that, that the two that I'm proposing are, are pretty analogous. I mean, they are, you know, the, the water collaborative is, is, you know, so the, the Watershed Council contributes to the community, like the people in the community by offering, you know, youth enrichment and, and education activities. But the water collaborative, you know, contributes to our community by, you know, providing stability to, of water supplies, to farmers, by providing, you know, you know, like a better place to recreate in the river. You know, a lot of the Watershed Council projects are, you know, they're in, they're, you know, yeah, I, I, you know, sometimes they're on, you know, private lands and not accessible to the, to the, to the overall community. So I, you know, I, I do, if you, if you look at, again, the, the investment, the additional investment in on-the-ground restoration that, that the collaborative generates, I mean, that's jobs. That's, that's, that's people doing work in the woods, people doing work in, in chipyards and places like that. So the impacts for the people of Deschutes County are, are substantial.
Yeah, I was just looking for ways to ask questions around this. So for the collaborative, we're interested in, yeah, understanding more about what's the current kind of structure. I'm, I'm interested in what's current structure, you know, what are, what are we investing in for the next couple of years? So maybe there's, if we would.
Whitney, how long has the Upper Deschutes Watershed Council been on the service partners' list?
See if I can pull that for you quick.
And the reason why I think it's really important is because we are planning three summer camps for 2021, and in, in addition to their planned restoration work, where you can actually see the difference they're making. But the fact that they have the youth program, I thought that's why it fit in here personally.
I can do a little bit of a deep dive. In page 62 of the packet, we've got service partner funding history that shows funding for the Watershed Council going back to at least 2016, but that's not indicative of how long they've been funded, it's just kind of where I cut the, the history spreadsheet. So let me dive in and see if I can get a more precise number on when that was established.
Okay, well, it just seemed like, yes.
There was a, there was a, you know, historically, there was a legislative push to create Watershed Councils, and counties had, were, you know, identified by the legislature as a key partner or, you know, beyond a key partner, that's sort of like the conveners or, you know, that there was a, there was a, a special role in organizing Watershed Councils identified for counties. And that's, I mean, that, that's why I think that one would still qualify under, you know, designation criteria number two. So Deschutes County initiated, led, or was actively involved in the creation or development of the organization.
Whitney, to their, to their notes, it says the past 15 years, they've been, they've done over 50 on-the-ground restoration projects. So I just wondered if we've been funding them for 15 years?
It's, I mean, so Allen Unger, I remember him bringing it in, saying, I'd like to make this a service partner, means, which means, you know, we kind of expect to see him year after year. So I think we were funding them year after year, and then we put it in this list of service partners since I've been around, so, you know, six or eight years.
At least back to 2000, 2012, if not prior.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, so then, that's Forest Collaborative. You know, we, we have resources, and if, you know, we're investing in something, let's just understand we're investing in, is it a long-term commitment or the next three to five years? You know, that's kind of the concept I would come up there. So then, the water partnership is the next, the other group effort, I guess.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the, the water collaborative is, is far newer than, than either the Watershed Council or the Forest Collaborative. But, you know, it is, in, in a lot of ways, it's a continuation of, of prior efforts. It's just sort of same stakeholders who've been working together, kind of move into a new phase of, of work. That, you know, a number of these people were involved in the basin study that was, you know, conducted over the last few years, and now they're ready to take that to action, you know, that they want to implement the, the projects identified under the basin study. And, you know, basically, what, you know, what the water collaborative is doing is helping to save water in the places where there are, there are good water savings opportunities, and then sharing that water with both the river and other farmers with junior water rights. And we see, you know, that the irrigation districts, I think, are very capable of planning and implementing, you know, major, you know, kind of like primary, main canal piping projects. But when you get into stuff like, you know, on-farm efficiency, or, you know, like private lateral piping, things like that, at, for many years, the irrigation districts were, just kind of said, you know, main canal, that's our job, the other stuff, like kind of, you know, they were sort of, you know, saying was, was beyond them. And I, I really think it's because of, you know, broader partnerships like this Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, that we're seeing the irrigation districts, you know, playing a, a key partnership role, but also there being a whole lot of other capacity developed to do the, the on-farm and the canal, and the, like, private, private lateral piping. And that's really critical because the main, the main canal piping projects, they're gonna save a lot of water, but it's gonna take, it's gonna take years and years to get those projects. It's huge, you know, capital infrastructure projects. So if we can get some of those, you know, smaller-scale projects done more quickly, which, you know, they, they lend themselves to being done much more quickly, they can still result in tens of thousand acre feet of water savings, which then, you know, again, we can use to, to help our, you know, particularly the, the North Unit Irrigation District farmers in Jefferson County, but also, you know, some of the other irrigation districts here in, here that are here in Deschutes County. And we can, we can, you know, make progress for the river fast. And we can, you know, make progress for the river faster than just waiting for the big canal, you know, the main canal projects to come through. You know, in my mind, that's the best argument for the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's great, big picture. And so then we're in the same spot. Who we're writing check to is a short-term or a long-term investment?
Right.
Is it going to be used to, you know, fund a meeting or buy a pipe or a facilitator or publish a document? You know, just that general kind of questions.
Yeah, yeah, and I, same thing, I would, like, I, I'm making, I'm making a pitch because I got a twinkle in my eye, but the people who would be best able to make the case for themselves are the stakeholders.
And this could be discretionary grant discussions possibly too this year, which we make a case to go in, you know, if there's a case to be made to go into longer-term, multi-year support.
Yeah, but I mean, do we make substantial-sized discretionary grants?
Well, that's up to us. In fact, that's what we're doing here today is defining our spreadsheet for the year. So, I mean, there's a way to say, you know, yeah, if you're asking for $10,000 or $20,000 or whatever for these, you know, possible $20,000 discretionary grant fund right here, and either we spend it or we don't. So, I mean, there's ways to put a marker right in this spreadsheet today.
And may I say something about Friends of the Children?
Yes, please.
Well, Friends of the Children, it actually, as I said earlier, their numbers are incredibly good as far as children learning how to read when they get to their third grade testing because they've had a mentor with them, actually encouraging them and paying attention to what they're doing. It's an amazing program. It was started in 1993 by Duncan Campbell. And Kim Hatfield is the director here. And I just feel like it actually does make a difference. When a child has been selected and is enabled to be part of this program, there's an enormous continuity. And even if that college-educated, like, tutor, you know, friend of the child, if that person leaves, they get someone else. But there's, you know, they really work on their continuity, and I think that is so important. How do we change the cycle of poverty? So I believe that this is a program that definitely has made a difference. Maybe, you know, it's quite expensive, but it's, I think it's worth it. If you can save, you know, six, 10, 12 kids a year and you can get them going the right way, it's wonderful. So I don't know if we could have them come and do a presentation or something, Whitney? But I feel like when you talk about CASA, and those are volunteers that are working with the program, where these are actually paid employees, they're college-educated, and I know that they do make a difference.
So making pitches for programs today, what about adding another line item? I'm just thinking, under grant programs, referring to other grants, other commissioner priorities or, you know, something like that. And, you know, making a case for each one of these and having a vote and coming up with a number.
And, you know, as you were asking about long-term or short-term, I could see, you know, I could see us creating a new category that's basically, that basically says, you showed us a project, you know, like a couple-of-year project, you know, two, three, four, five-year project that we're interested in, that we think is valuable. We would like to kind of provide you some support for, you know, a couple of years. And we'll consider making you a long-term service partner, you know, at the end of that period, you know, after we determine whether you're, whether you're going to be around for a long time or not, continuing to do this important work. You know, that might be a way to kind of track some additional groups into our service partner group.
And then, and we do do annual budgeting, so we're not committing to future budgets either, you know, as a word like this. But, yeah, however we can document it now, it's like, oh, that's what we were investing in, you know, just in case three and five years from now.
Right, yeah, because I mean, I think of, I mean, and you all have been through more discretionary grant cycles than I have, so. But to me, it kind of feels like you're inviting one-off projects. It's like, oh, okay, you got a need this year, tell me about it. And like, oh, that sounds like a good thing to do in the next six months. Great, we'll give you a couple of thousand dollars.
And my understanding, I mean, this fund has been larger. Before my time, this was even a larger fund. Well, and, you know, the state legislature, I mean, you know, there's all kinds of, this was a lot bigger fund back in the day, is my understanding. So this is, you know, Dennis, Luke, Mike, Daley days. And, you know, it is what it is, which is still significant. We're investing in a lot of great things here. But, yeah, I mean, things could change with the legislature also, you know, and we pay for regional solutions. Before we get these dollars, right before we get these dollars, we take and pay for half of regional solutions, and then this number pops out. So if we weren't doing that, this number would be larger too. That's why there's a case for, hey, governor, and regional solutions, aren't we a partner here? We're taking cash out of an account before we even get to see it.
Yeah, and that's why I'm also, you know, starting to make this argument that, you know, Deschutes County is unique and that we have a large amount of discretionary transient room tax revenue. And I think it's entirely appropriate to turn around and reinvest some of that revenue into projects and groups that continue to keep this a great place for people to visit. I mean, and, you know, that would be, so like the Upper Deschutes Watershed Council, I could easily make an argument that we should bump that out of being funded by, you know, through lottery dollars and instead be funded through transient room tax revenue. You know, the work that they're, you know, the work that they're doing in Waiteuse Creek and Tributaries and in the Metolias and places like that, that is definitely making the fishing better. And the better fishing leads to more people coming to visit.
More fish on the grill.
Oh, no, you can't catch the fish.
Got to release them.
Catch them and.
Okay, well, so how about, as I say, from our discussions today, we put another line item here called grant programs commissioners, you know, grand ideas or, you know, something like that, you know, just generic thing. And then, you know, put $50,000 or $60,000 in there to be followed up on for these, you know, in the next few weeks or whenever.
You know, like partner developmental funds.
Yeah, well, as I say, right now, it's idea fund. And then, you know, however, and then, yeah, if we want to categorize service partners into something else also. That'd be a good discussion.
When will we have our fourth quarter allocation meeting, Whitney? Do we know, do we have that on the calendar yet?
Oh, your discretionary grant, that will be in the next few weeks. And I thought that you were going to ask about that, and I have a little bit of an update related to kind of funds that remain and how much grant requests we have for Q4, so I can hop into that when we get into the discretionary grant.
Whitney, new grant fund-partners. That's wonderful. No, that's good. That's very, it's great.
Okay.
So how about $60,000 as a, just kind of the contingency amount to be discussed? Because then it's just a nice big round number.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, you know.
And we'll see what it rolls up to at the bottom of the spreadsheet when we finish.
We named, we named three potentials today, but I mean, you know, if we're kind of creating this new process for consideration and this opportunity, we should definitely all kind of keep our thinking caps on about other groups that we think are important, you know, really critically important to the county and the community to, you know, potentially place in this category to come, come give us a pitch. Community Shark Tank.
Well, there's, I mean, there's a, yeah, okay, there's a discussion there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thrilled to know that we may have the Hunter Jumper Show, the classic. So I hope Stephanie's watching.
So.
I'm sure she is.
I'm sure, yes.
The other idea, the other idea that I threw out there was, you know, was investments in rural economic development and, you know, what we can do to assist some of our innovative and entrepreneurial farmers and ranchers as they, as they think about, you know, different kinds of enterprises, be that, you know, like value-added processing of food, be that a farm stand, be that, you know, some kind of agritourism idea. And I'll be interested to hear what, you know, a number of people who have contacted me with some of these ideas. I pointed towards the planning commission to give them input.
For land use type of stuff, you mean?
Yeah, because, you know, a lot of what I was hearing was, you know, your process to get my permit to, you know, to do a commercial kitchen is just, it's too long and it's too expensive. And, you know, can I not pay $15,000 for this or something like that? And so if, if essentially those are our costs, you know, our county staff needs to, you know, do a lot of analysis to, in order to say, you know, okay, you can have your commercial kitchen without, you know, having impacts on neighbors and water quality and air quality and stuff like that, then, you know, I would propose that we set aside a chunk of money to pay for our staff costs so that we don't have to, we don't have to charge the, you know, these, you know, struggling, you know, like small struggling, you know, like small challenged, you know, capital-challenged, small businesses to pony up those funds.
Oh, and I'd love to talk to some of those folks and understand what the needs are there too. So, yeah, the clarity on what you're suggesting, I would love to see more detail on what that is, you know.
Right, and so I am hoping that between the planning commission and, you know, and CDD, that they've been collecting some of this information and that they'll, they'll have something to, something to, you know, kind of propose to us or run by us in a few months.
I know that one of our traded sector edco efforts has been specialty food production and manufacturing too. So then there's a good crossroads right there, you know, are we talking the same thing or not? You know, if it's local food production and not traded sector, that's one definition. But if it's a commercial kitchen, there's hopefully the same set of rules, so we sure could learn about that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, and I don't, I think a lot of our specialty food production that you see, you know, in edco projects, you know, it's not necessarily locally grown raw materials. You know, you bring in a bunch of ingredients and you make something really cool, but.
Oh, yes, I've made those before. They're in our school forever, smell like horse treats.
Well, have you been to the place in Redmond?
Which?
Forget the name of it now.
They make horse treats here?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My horses are very picky.
Forget the brand, probably a brand you use, I don't know.
I mean, you can imagine, you know, people who want to like, you know, grow animals and make like sausage and jerky. I mean, that's, that's value-added processing of locally grown.
Which fits right back to the meat processing industry.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, local production. So, yeah, now there's a lot of common ground here.
Yeah.
What would we invest in? I, you know, I don't know.
Right, right, but, you know, this may be, you know, it may, it may take more than a few months to kind of, to ripen this idea, but I would definitely like us to consider, you know, if we're making these substantial investments in edco, which is great in our, you know, like leads to, you know, jobs and exciting businesses in our, you know, in our industrial-zoned lands, you know, primarily within cities, within the county. You know, what can we do to, you know, increase the vibrancy of, you know, the agricultural sector in our county? It's, I think that there's things that can be done.
Some people just say, leave me alone.
Well, they don't have to, they don't have to come, they don't have to come looking for a permit if they want to be left alone.
There's actually an agricultural operation not too far from me that was trying any way they could in order to survive in COVID. And they were doing a lot of things that I think were not quite working out for them. And I feel so badly for them because I know the economy was so bad. And, you know, it's like they're working and they're trying to survive and pay their bills. And, you know, and then we have, we have a ranch that sells all its products right there in Tamalo that you can stop by and buy things. Now their office hours are, in the winter, aren't that open? That, you know, I think it's noon to five or something daily, but, you know, you see those kind of operations. And I'm always buying those products from people, so, you know, how to support local economies.
Well, yeah, this is good. So we got the line item in, ideas are out there. It'll be exciting to see.
That looks really good, Whitney. Thank you very much.
What's that?
The line item there.
No, kind of compliments for it.
Okay, um, does the board want to move into discussion about the grants section, which is kind of the final section of the, of this spreadsheet? Okay.
We have a, so we have a sense of how we're going to proceed, at least with those new grant fund-partners.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll, as with your other grant programs, we usually develop kind of information about the programs and kind of guidelines. And so we can come back to the board and kind of finesse what the requirements and categories might be for a new program. That way we're able to communicate it to folks who might be interested. So we can definitely come back and have a follow-up conversation to kind of explore that idea a little bit more. But I've taken great notes from your conversation today, so thank you.
And it was all recorded, I think, too.
Yep, as long as everything's still working well. Okay, perfect. So grant programs, discretionary grants, during your allocation exercise last year, you allocated $60,000 for discretionary grants. But then during Q3, we, the board authorized an additional $1,000 to kind of make Commissioner Chang whole. So that's why you see $61,000 reflected there. Additionally, there's this $15,000 in fundraising grants, and normally those grant requests come to you at the same time. So just a little bit of a flag there. Total remaining, we assumed when we worked on beginning net working capital that we're going to fully expend what we allocated for fiscal year '21 for the current year. You have a little bit more than $12,000 across those two programs remaining. I took a quick look at your Q4 grant requests that are going to come to you later this month, and you have more than $30,000 in requests coming to you in Q4.
We have $12,000?
Correct, so there won't be enough money remaining from this year's allocations to fully fund. Not that you do fully fund all requests, but you're getting a pretty sizable number of requests. Commissioner Dare, I know you've kind of chatted in the past, and in fiscal year '20, we did what we called a Q5 funding round.
Q5.
Yep, we, it looks like it was $20,000 that we kind of added back in, and we ran a Q5 process. I wanted to offer for the board's consideration, we might want to, if you're interested in pursuing something like that, we might want to just infuse that funding into Q4 since we have such a strong showing of grant applications already. And we could potentially extend the Q4 application deadline. But we could also keep it as it is or do a Q5 offering. That's completely up to you.
Well, I like the idea of just extending it a teeny bit, just letting people know that if you didn't put in, we are going to do that additional. Do we have the funding in that we can take another $20,000?
I mean, with, yes, yes, we do.
Good, that's good to hear. Thank you, Whitney.
So we're talking about changing the 2021 allocation from $61,000 to?
Essentially $81,000, and then that would reduce our beginning net by that 20.
And, yeah, so the spreadsheet represents both of those anyway, so that's good.
If we open it up a little bit wider, do you think we'll get a lot more or?
I think we have consistently seen grant applications coming in. Technically, that we cut the deadline for what you receive in a quarter. And we can also, as Commissioner Dare indicated, we could email, we have a distribution list of folks who have received grant funding and email them and let them know we've extended the Q4 window to a certain date.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, if we had 30K of requests and we have 12K to work with, if we added 20K, it might almost be too much.
Yep.
But if we get more, then maybe adding 20K is the right amount.
The other thing we could do is you could take a look at what you have requested and make the decision then on terms of if you want to supplement and how much. That would always be, you could kind of make that decision after you've had a chance.
Like we made that $1,000 decision.
In the meeting.
Live when we were reviewing it, and now it showed up here.
So has that deadline closed then?
Technically, yes, and I shouldn't say this. We usually try to be as accommodating as we can. So, yes, it's closed, but, I mean, we work really hard to bring you all the grant requests that we have because we know it's helpful for those. grant requests that we have because we know it's helpful for those nonprofits.
Okay, it's closed, but?
It's closed, but we want to help people.
Call your commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Whitney.
So, there's support for, yeah, this fiscal year bumping that to $81,000, and then setting next year's number to supplement.
Okay, so I'll kind of make a note as we prepare for Q4 that that number, there just may be a little bit of, that could be supplemented, if that sounds good, does that sound good to the board? Okay.
So, then, do we support starting next year with $60,000, $5,000 per quarter?
That would make sense, wouldn't it? Then we can...
As a starting point?
Yeah, I think so.
So, then we're bumping up, we're bumping up to 80 this fiscal year, so, but let's start off with 60 next year, and if things change drastically...
Is there, I mean, if we got the funds, is there a reason not to bump, just go ahead and bump it up a little bit? I mean...
We do, I mean, because remember, there's contingency, and the bottom of this, you know, contingency is pretty large, yeah.
Every year, there's 10,000 more people in Deschutes County, right? Or is our growth rate even faster than that?
So, would you like to stay at 60 for discretionary or bump up?
I think staying at 60 is okay, and then it's always nice if we do have that extra funding by the end of the year, then we can add it to the fourth quarter, but it's much more conservative to, I mean, just think, we were so fortunate that we were so conservative how we accounted for things last year, and, you know, it's much better than to be short and need funding because we've overspent.
In this program?
No, I was talking about another group.
Okay.
So, yeah, starting with 60, but we can, yeah, quarterly, we'll be looking at that number, we'll be spending some dollars, and if it needs to change, you can change.
Okay, fundraising, would you like to keep things similar as well with 15,000, or would you like to adjust?
So, 15,000 is, I mean, it could be a different number, but I like to see them at, you know, $2,500, $3,000, or $5,000 for big events kind of number, so it's nice to know that that'll definitely fund a few organizations and their fundraising efforts.
And am I remembering correctly that we weren't, we weren't as close to pushing the max or using up all the funds in that category as we were in the discretionary?
That's accurate.
Yeah, so, I mean, it seems like 15,000 is fine.
Yep.
And then arts and culture grants, this past year was funded at $20,000, and I actually, we'll go back and double-check that, I think we actually may, we allocated a tiny bit, you, we adjusted that number slightly, so we'll make sure that that reflects, but close to $20,000.
I don't think I've been through the arts and culture grant cycle, can you give me a little bit more background?
Yep, that's a grant program that we run to increase our arts and culture offerings and programs throughout the county, and so we see a wide variety of applicants, folks like Bend Film Individual, there's literary applicants, there's just a wide variety of programs that submit for funding that come to consideration by the board, usually around December, late December, early January is when we have run that program in the last couple of years.
Thank you.
So, yeah, how about $25,000, just to bump that one up a little bit and see where it goes?
Was there a lot of competition for 20,000 last year?
There was, and that's, I think the board went through the exercise and felt like kind of where we landed, I want to say we were in the low 20s for a final amount, and I'll double-check that, but, yeah, there was significant, there was strong interest in the program, for sure.
Well, so many of their programs were so COVID-impacted, stopped and/or remembered that we had the funds that were going to be held over, and we approved that.
Yep.
So, and then it reminds me, you know, we had One Time Project Fund, Bend Next Childcare and Central Oregon Center for the Arts, you know, so, I mean, there's, we pull line items out for just, you know, ideas at some point, too, so, that's, you know, maybe, there's different ways to put those things in here.
Okay. So, that kind of gets us through the internal grant section with obviously noting the addition of $60,000 for this new grant program still to be named, and then the last chunk of the grant section is the United Way of Central Oregon Emergency Food, Clothing, and Shelter Grant Program, and they're requesting $80,000, which is consistent with the funding they received in fiscal year '21. This historically was called the Community Grant Program, and then at a certain point was transitioned over to United Way to distribute these funds among community organizations.
But I think we found that basically the same set of people applying for them was going to United Way, and they were, we reduced the work for the applicants by just sending dollars to United Way, because we supported anybody that United Way would support.
Right.
So, that's how we got to this.
That sounds fine, to keep it at 80.
Okay, great.
But I am really happy about the $100,000 for the grant, the fuels reduction. I think people have the match, Ed's been working this for several years, he knows what works, what inspires people to step up, so, thank goodness, we can do that.
Yeah, that's pretty exciting, and, you know, some of those can be small grants, but a bunch of them is really going to make a difference in the neighborhoods and communities.
Definitely.
Okay, so, that concludes our preliminary exercise. You can see that you'd have some remaining fund balance there after we completed today's allocation, and staff can certainly check in with the board kind of to provide an update on what revenue coming in looks like and kind of how closely we're tracking with the projections Greg has made for the coming year, although I'm sure he's spot on, so...
So, Whitney, that number, if you've got the million point 116, minus the 79,000, isn't it what it's supposed to do?
Yep.
But that 708, isn't, something's off there.
This is our total, and what I was gonna, my next statement was going to be, before the board approves this, I was going to take this back, I'll make sure that everything's lining up, and then I'll bring it back to you for your final approval, just to make sure that we kind of clean up around the edges, but I think I have the formula straightened out, that would be, but I'll go ahead and double-check it. So, we'd be looking at resources minus requirements, minus contingency, but I'll double-check that before I bring it back and make sure all the formulas in this are, regardless, I think we're safe that we will have funds remaining.
So, then, this is discretion of the commissioners, because then in our budget process, this is kind of one package that goes into the budget, but it's really that large number, and there's no other discussion at the Budget Committee meeting, but, I mean, the spreadsheet's available to the world to see what we're doing here. Great, well, great discussion today.
Exciting to see, to see all of the great things that we can invest in.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep, and Commissioner Derr, I just double-checked that's working for me, but I'll double-check it, I know it's...
Yeah, I know, I did it with my little $15 calculator, it was working.
Okay, good. So, like I said, I'll clean this up and I'll make the adjustments to fiscal year '21 for discretionary grants, we'll get you a clean version, bring it back for your final review and approval. Kind of next steps on this is that we'll begin the process of contacting organizations and executing agreements prior to the start of the fiscal year with a start date of the start of next fiscal year, July 1st.
Okay, thank you very much for that item, good work session. Is there anything else for this meeting?
Are we good?
Seeing none, meeting adjourned.